Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of December 9th, 2021. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, otherwise known as a Sunshine Law. Notice that the 2021 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk posted on the township website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. Further notice has been provided to the saying that as of July 1st of this year, the remainder of the 2021 Planning Board meetings will be held in person here at the Peter J. Biondi Building. Live virtual participation will no longer be available. In addition, application documents have been made available on the Township Civic Clerk website. Complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. With that, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Delkhor absent. Mr. Julian is absent. Mr. S. Tag is absent. Mr. Skolbo is absent. Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Peason.
Here.
Mr. Santuramita.
Here.
Mr. Chikrally.
Here.
Mr. Emmett. I'm sitting right now. Mela Pani.
Present.
And Chairman Sorokin.
Here. Can we also go through the boards and township professionals? Sorry.
They're just here.
Trust me, they're bills we can't forget.
Mr. Maske.
Here.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Mr. Euro.
Here.
Mr. Bealan.
Here.
Mr. Stu... Oh, it's me. I'm here.
He's here.
He's here.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Very loud.
Okay. We do not have any meeting minutes for consideration. We do have a resolution for the ingress file, 21-PB-13-MSV. An eligible to vote is Mr. Wagner, Mr. Peason, Mrs. Santa Romita, Mr. or Mela Pani, and myself.
I make the motion to approve it. Mela Pani?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any comments from DAS? Hearing on roll call, please.
Wagner.
Yes.
Peason.
Yes.
Mr. Santa Romita.
Yes.
Okay. Mela Pani.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We do not have any planning board business, sorry. Next is business from the floor for matters on the agenda. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on any items that are not on this evening's agenda, please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record, spelling of your last name, and just a reminder again, this is for comments, not a Q&amp;A session.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. I'm also Hillsborough Township property owner, block 86, lot 32155, Camplain Road. Not far from my property, a sign has been installed that says 10 Concord Street. That's by the entrance to a path that's been excavated from Camplain Road. So there's a development going up on block 86, lot 21.01. That lot does not have a, does not have frontage on an improved street. So I guess the Concord Street, which is a paper street, has been excavated. There's no documentation showing that the township, first of all, I believe that a paper street, that property belongs to the township. So that should have been shown as either vacated or sold to the developer because that path has been cleared to the back. And I don't know where 10 Concord Street came from, since Concord Street is a paper street. There's a lot of, lot of questions that need to be answered in regard to that development because the application is from RPM Development, and it's, he's supposed to be developing Phase 1, which is block 86, lot 21.01. Yet the application that he submitted to the Planning Board is for block 86, lot 21. And there are two lots. I had received, my husband and I had received a legal notice that was sent via certified U.S. Mail Return Receipt Requested, which stated that there would be a hearing to subdivide block 86, lot 21. That hearing was to be held on July 11, 2019. And then that was extended to another meeting. That was, I think, July 25th. I'm not sure of the date. And at that second meeting, approval was given by the Planning Board to subdivide block 86, lot 21 into two separate parcels of 31.3 acres each. So RPM Development, and RPM Development is shown in the Housing Plan Element and Fair Share Plan. It says RPM Sherman Phase 1, and in parentheses Concord Urban Renewal Associates. They are the developer for Phase 1. And then the second parcel, which is block 86, lot 21.02, is shown on the Housing Plan Element and Fair Share Plan, that the developer for that property is going to be M&amp;M Realty. The plan is for the developer of the Glengarry Project. It's going to be responsible for constructing Phase 2 of the Sherman parcel. So why is RPM shown as the developer for block 86, lot 21, when that lot no longer exists because it was subdivided? Now, I also had gotten a certified mail return receipt letter from Mid-Atlantic Engineering that's dated October 12, 2020. So this was after that property was subdivided. And it says here, reference Sherman Track Phase 1, but it's showing block 86, lot 21. And this is an application for authorization under Freshwater Wetlands General Permit. So I never received a certified mail letter stating that an application for authorization under Freshwater Wetlands was submitted by RPM Development for the parcel that they're going to be developing, block 86, lot 21.01. There's no, there's no drawing showing what's on that property. Block 86, lot 21 has, that huge parcel was 1/3 wetlands. There's a Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission easement on there. There are streets on, streams on there. That is vacant virgin land. There are no sewers on there. There's no public water. So did RPM, Edward Martoglio of RPM, did he submit an application to have sewers and public water provided on his parcel, block 86, lot 21.01? Because I haven't gotten any kind of information. And I'm right there on that street. My property is on that street. Now, the lot next to me, block 86, lot 4, that was starting to be excavated until I questioned that at the Engineering Department because that would be a path to the back to this block 86, lot 21.01 or 02, because that property has no frontage. That is a requirement of the I-1 Light Industrial Zone, which also, this property, that's the zone that it's in. So there is, there is no permitted use residential, residential dwellings in the I-1 Light Industrial Zone, yet block, block 86, lot 21.01 is being excavated. And the project is for residential, residential development that's going to have 13 two-story buildings containing 88 residential units. So I'd like to know what's going on with that property because the, the records that I've been provided don't match up. It's not block 86, lot 21. There is no, in the tax list, in the Tax Assessor's Office, there is no block 86, lot 21. There are two separate parcels of 31 point, approximately 31.3 acres each, and each parcel is going to be developed by a different developer. So block 86, lot 21.01 should have their own LOI showing what the environmental features are on that property. And this is information I've been asking for. I do submit Oprah requests. I think I had asked for construction permits. Are there permits for sewers and water on that property? I get answers like, no such document exists, and things like that. That's, this, this is very, needs, this just needs to have a lot of, a lot of stuff explained. Now, but last week's Planning Board meeting, Toll Brothers' application was before the board.
Can we address one, each one at a time? I think we're up, excuse me, I think we're up to three questions now. So, I mean, do you want us to address these now?
No, I'm going to address any questions.
All right.
Those are just hypotheticals.
Thanks for the question.
I would like to have questions answered, but I'm being told here that I cannot ask questions. I can only make comments. But these are, these are questions. These are questions that need to be answered. Now, Toll Brothers had a minor subdivision subdividing two lots. Both of those lots are used as a golf course, yet there's two separate lots. Those lots were subdivided. One lot is smaller, the other one somehow increased, and then a third lot was created. So that third lot, since it's a new parcel and it's over 100 acres, that too should have a, an application for a level of interpretation to show what environmental features are on that specific lot. So there's a lot of stuff that doesn't look like it's being done the way it should be done. So those are my comments. Those are my comments for now. But I am stating, I am an interested party. My property adjoins block 86, lot, the former block 86, lot 21, which is now two separate parcels. And what I've been sent as far as the information for the freshwater wetlands permits, that's showing block 86, lot 21, after they, after that property was subdivided. So I think there needs to be some answers in regards to all of this stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional members of the public would like to provide comments on matters not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none. Moving on, we do not have any considerations of ordinances, so we will move to this evening's public hearing application, JSM at Hillsborough LLC filed 20-PB-09-MSPV. We're not going to get into the details because this is a continuation from the October 14th, 2021 meeting without further notice. So Counselor, you may begin.
Thank you, Chairman. For the record, I'm Doug Wolfson. Normally, I would typically stand addressing the tribunal, but because the mic is low on the table, does the Chair of the Board mind if I sit while I speak?
No, no. Say it all you want. We are.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Excuse me, Mr. Wolfson, I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. Chairman, just a housekeeping. Can we put on the record, Mr. Bernstein, that the Chairman has signed an affidavit that he has listened to prior meetings that he was absent from?
Is that in possession of your office?
At my desk.
In possession of the Chairman at the moment.
We also have one from Mr. Wagner relative to the October 14th meeting, so Chairman would sign.
Okay. Bring it over.
I actually appreciate that very much, Mr. Maske and Mr. Bernstein. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So correctly stated, we are back from the October meeting. We were asked to, among other things, clean up some of the details of the plans in those areas where we were asked to make certain changes based on board preferences and predilections, as well as the comments from your professionals, Mr. Euro, Mr. Maske. We endeavored to do that. We submitted some revised plans, which Mr. Almbach will review as to what those changes were shortly. And we did submit those and received from Mr. Euro's office a lengthy review letter which incorporates a lot of what we did, does not necessarily make reference to all the testimony that was previously given, but does on many occasions say that we complied, we fixed it, we did X, Y, and Z. And Mr. Almbach will go through that for the board, just to briefly bring us up to date and recap what we were doing and what we've done. He'll also show you some architecturals, which we now are able to get the computer to work, so everybody will be able to see what the revised architecturals look like. And then our final witness would be Christine Cofon, our planner, and will address this question. Essentially, there are some variance issues that are to be addressed by us. I think probably the one that seemed, I don't mean to be presumptuous, but seemed to be the most concerning to the board was the parking issue. And we had proposed a plan that provided for 166 parking spaces. Under the technical reading of the ordinance overall, I think the 202 was required. We're overparked, meaning we have more than required for the residential, less than required for the commercial, which of course, as you all know, was an existing development. We proposed a couple of options for the Board's consideration. We, of course, believe and testify to the fact to Mr. Penkey and Mr. Almbach that we believe the parking, and Mr. Bowler, that we believe the parking was adequate as designed. The plan that was revised that Mr. Euro and Mr. Maske have reviewed, and hopefully is in your packet as well, does show a mix of 9-by-18s and 10-by-18s, and that increased some of the spaces. There is an option for the Board, if the Board was concerned about the number of spaces, we could increase, I think it's another 80, give or take, and Mr. Almbach will give the right number for that. How many spaces that are still, I think it's 76 that are 10 by 18. And we could all make those nines if the Board wanted. And that would, of course, give us an additional 11 spaces. And then there's another area, because we are overparked on the residential, there's an area nearby the commercial which could be designated for employee parking only with signage, and there are 16 spaces there. So if you add those 11 into 16, it brings us up to 193 of the 202. So those are options that are available to the Board. We're not proposing that, but we're amenable to it if the Board believes that's important. And then the last issue was there's land banking of some area that we could use for parking. And I think that would give us another 14?
Correct.
14 spaces. We prefer to leave it as green space and landscape, which of course eliminates a coverage variance, eliminates a buffer variance. But if the court, if the, if the Board felt it was important to get those additional spaces in there, that could be used for parking as well. And then that would bring us over the 202. So we could park it if we wanted to, if you wanted us to do it. That way, we think the plan that we proposed is appropriate and safe and good for access, and we will not have a shortage of parking. As you know, it's in our interest to make sure our tenants are not unhappy and don't fold. So we want to make sure, and the tenants will know, that there are enough spaces for them. So without any further ado, Mr. Chairman, if you're amenable, I would like to reintroduce Mr. Almbach, so he can give you a brief summary of the planned changes through the overheads and go through, at his leisure and yours, Mr. Euro's letter. So it will bring us completely up to date before we go over to Ms. Cofon.
Okay. Eric, do we need to reword? Okay.
You want to do it?
Tina.
You sound so attested to that you'd be the truth or you'd be the one.
I do.
So Ron, you heard my little recap for the Board. Can we jump off and start giving them an idea of what we did in the meantime between October and now? And if you have overheads, make reference. And the records should reflect that I gave the CD that contains all these images to Counsel, so he's got that.
Again, thank you. Again, just for the record, my name is Ronald Allenbach, A-U-L-E-N-B-A-C-H. I'm the Director of Engineering, Planning, and Development for Edgewood Properties, the parent company of JSM at Hillsborough. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I put on the screen before you the overall site plan, but I'm going to go through a list of kind of bullet point changes of what we did because one of the things that came out of the last meeting was needing really to clean up the plans. We had a lot of open items on several of professional letters, whether it be the Fire Department, or Mr. Euro's letter, Mr. Maske's letter. So we went through and just tried to clean up and address a lot of those details that were requested in his letter. So I'll go through and, and just overall, there was no changes to the overall site or building location.
Mr. Almbach.
I'm sorry.
Has this been previously introduced before the Board?
This was, I don't believe was previously introduced, Mr. Bernstein. This is a page out of the packet that was submitted to the Board, but I can certainly...
Why don't we mark it as A. Do we, do we have any previous exhibits? I don't recall, David.
And if you could, if you're referencing a particular section, could you blow it up so the people in the, in the public could see it?
Sure. Thank you. I'm, I'm A.
A-1. Could you indicate, Mr. Almbach, who the author of this document is, what it is, and what it represents, the date, and what it represents?
Sure. This is a site plan prepared by Bowler Engineering Associates. It is entitled Overall Site Layout Plan.
Pegging off the...
Sorry, my life.
Come on, Ron.
I'm sorry, Sheet 301, and it is revised 11/23/2021.
Thank you. That's just right.
As I indicated, there was no changes to the site layout or building location from the previous submission. The footprint was updated to show the latest understory car parking layout was increased by four spaces for the residential portion, and that matches the architecturals. Almost all of the Fire Department comments were addressed, and we will get to that letter in a little while. The T&amp;M letter, which we're going to go over in detail, a lot of the comments, as you see when we go through the letter, were addressed, and whichever ones weren't, were partially addressed. There's still need testimony we'll go over tonight. The stormwater management design has been refined with more detail and added additional information as requested. Grading spot elevations on the grading plan were added and modified for ADA spaces. Truck turning, the art tank, which is the stormwater, and sewer demand calculations are provided, provided as requested by T&amp;M. The sanitary sewer design has been rerouted to avoid the town and the TRCC buffer in the rear. A note was added on the plans for lighting that we testified about the hours of operation and dimming. The letter of interpretation and flood hazard permits from the DEP were provided as requested by T&amp;M. And that's basically the overview of what we've done since our last meeting to try to clean up the plans, if you will.
So can we take a look now at Mr. Euro's letter and go through the things that were recognized by his office as complied, addressed, or for those which still require some testimony?
Absolutely. Again, Mr. Chairman, referring to the T&amp;M review memo dated December 6, 2021, it's the third engineering review memo. If it's appropriate, we'll start on Page 2, under Paragraph B, 2, where the engineer's asking for additional details or some talk on what we're providing about the additional amenities. We have, you know, obviously an outdoor pool. We have an outdoor pool area with a cabana and a poolhouse located in the courtyard. We have an indoor clubhouse with several amenities as far as a business center, a gym, a great room, a leasing office, and that'll be in there. There's also, the other courtyard will be utilized as a recreational area. That basically covers the amenities that are proposed for the residential building itself. Turning to Page 3, I will skip down to Paragraph 5. I believe Mr. Wolfson spoke briefly about the parking. What I'd like to talk about with the Board, if it's appropriate, is the location. As Mr. Bowler had testified to at the last hearing, as it relates to the front parking field with the commercial spaces, the ones that are in close proximity, what we feel are the high turnover spaces, which are in large, in front of a large retail establishment, the center, the spaces located in the center of the parking lot, those are currently 10-foot wide spaces. The perimeter spaces around that are all 9-foot wide spaces. When you skip over to the left side of the drawing, the, again, the ones that are right in front of the larger retail pad, those are the 10-foot spaces. And then as you wrap around the perimeter, again, for those high turnover spaces, those are 10-foot wide. The balance of the internal ones are all 9-foot wide. As Mr. Wolfson indicated, at the Board's discretion, should they feel that the number of parking spaces should be increased, we could convert those 10-foot spaces to 9-foot spaces. That would give us an additional 11 spaces located in the two front field parking lots. One of the things that Mr. Wolfson also spoke about was the 16 spaces that are located immediately to the upper left or just behind the retail building that's located, if you can see my cursor moving in this area here, these 16 spaces here that are in close proximity to the retail could be designated as employee for the retail, and that would, again, give an additional 16. As Mr. Wolfson indicated, we don't believe we need it, but if the Board felt that they wanted to add some extra spaces to the retail, we could also do that. And that would also free up what we talked about at the last hearing with the, these 14 spaces that are land banked. As the Board's aware, we discussed it last time, if the Board decided that they felt the need for those additional banked parking spaces, that would require a variance for the buffer as well as an impervious. So we feel that the 18 banked spaces would be best suited to not be installed and leave it as a landscape buffed area. And I believe your, your professionals would agree with that.
And you would work with the professionals to make sure the landscape is consistent with what is typically used in the township and appropriate for the site.
Correct.
Just a point of clarification, please. The 16 spaces you were talking about possibly making for employee parking, would that reduce the amount available for residential parking, or is that above and beyond what you need in RSIS?
Yeah, it'd be above and beyond. As Mr. Wolfson indicated, we're 20 over. So if we took those 16, we'd still be four over from RSIS.
Thank you.
Would those be... Would they be designated as parking spaces, non, for the non-employees, or would they just not be put in? I'm kind of confused.
They would be designated as employee parking only.
Okay. So if they, yeah, my question is, if they're not employee parking, are there still spots going to be there?
Yes.
Okay.
The only difference would be...
Spots are going to be there, whether they're...
Signed or not.
...open free-for-all, or whether they're for an employee.
That's correct. The signs will be there.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry, not the signs. The spaces will be there.
Spaces will be there. Perfect. Thank you. We'll sign them if the Board thinks it's what we had to use them for employee in order to increase the number of spaces related to the retail versus where we're overparked for the residential.
If the Board would flip to Page 4, under Paragraph 7. I know we talked about this last time. It's not our position right now that we designate any residential parking spaces. We only, I think we've only done it at one of our sites that became a problem, so we parked it. We typically would not designate parking spaces for residential.
I'm sorry, jumping one more time, Mr. Almbach. While we're on parking, are you, I can't remember from prior hearings, are you providing EV spaces or EV-ready spaces?
Yeah, we, I don't know if we testified the last time, but we'll be providing four EV spaces in a commercial area, as well as, I think, four, maybe six, in the residential area.
Okay. You know offhand, and I hadn't had a chance yet, would that comply with the new required EV ordinances that the State has put out?
I believe the residential is one per 50. I think we might need five, so that's why I said we would do six. So that would comply. Bottom line, we would comply.
You'll comply. I'll comply.
All right. For both, for both the retail.
The, the State law, you're supposed to get extra credits...
Yes.
...towards parking. But from a practical perspective, it obviously makes no difference to Hillsborough, but from the State's perspective, every EV is worth two, for the record.
Going down to number 13 on the bottom of Page 4, I believe we just spoke about that. This is in relationship to the 18, so truly 14 spaces, once you construct them, the buffer area that we talked about. On top Page 5, under Paragraph 14, there is connectivity, and Christine, our planner, will touch on this later. The area that's immediately adjacent to the large retail building opposite Andrea Avenue, there's a grade drop there that we cannot provide access to that immediate sidewalk on Andrea. However, there is sidewalk connection on 206 onto the site, and there's also off of Andrea Avenue, you can walk down, and then you can get across the road and walk down the side of the retail. So there's connectivity from both the residential and commercial, as well as anybody who would be walking on Andrea or 206. They just, when they get in this immediate pinch point, if you will, from the existing building, the grading doesn't allow for sidewalk connection there. On number 15, again, this talks about screening, and it kind of circles back to that land-banked area and providing appropriate screening. area and providing appropriate screening. The rest of the page is either addressed or will comply. I'm sorry, Mr. Euro, just for your benefit, I'm sorry. Number 21 is a will comply.
Thank you.
Page 622, again, this talks about the bank parking spaces. Under Paragraph C, and I'll defer to Mr. Euro, but I believe that Mr. Pankey covered the traffic section, with the exception of the things we're discussing tonight on parking. I believe that he, with the exception of us including a truck turning template as requested, I believe the traffic was testified and covered at the last hearing, but I defer to Mr. Euro for that.
That's correct. Prior testimony is acceptable.
Under Stormwater Management, we will go to Page 9. Paragraph 2 is a will comply. 3 and 4 is addressed. Mr. Euro, 5 and 6 is a will comply. Top of Page 10, 7 and 8 are will comply. On Number 9, at the last hearing, Mr. Bowler testified about the drainage, and there will be no adverse drainage impacts on any adjacent properties. 10 is addressed. 11 is a will comply. 12 is addressed. So obviously, there's a plan, and we'll work with your professionals on the existing storm structures that are out there during construction. What needs to be removed will remain in place. The intent is that most of it will be removed, some will remain in place. Obviously, whatever is inspected by the town, it doesn't, or needs to be replaced, we would agree to replace it. 14 through 17, we're all addressed. 18 through 25 on Page 11, we're all addressed. As far as utilities, obviously, the existing buildings that are out there, whatever utility connections are out there, will have to be inspected. They will be inspected and approved by the township inspector, whether it's the Sewer Authority to Water or the Township Engineer. Number 2 was addressed. Top of Page 12, 3 and 4 both addressed. Under Paragraph 5, I'm sanitary sewer. 1 is a statement. Items 2, 3, and 4, we agree to comply. 5 and 6 were addressed. 7 is a will comply. On Page 13, Items 8 and 9 were addressed. 9 talks about the monitoring wells. There are existing monitoring wells on the site. Obviously, any of the monitoring wells that are impacted by future development, the relocation of those monitoring wells has to be approved by the DEP. We do have a licensed LSRP that is signed to this site. And as I testified at the last hearing, the only outstanding environmental issue, if you will, on the site is groundwater. All the other environmental issues have been addressed, and we've received, I still call it an NFA, but an RAO for the underground tanks, the other items that were on it. And those documents were all provided to the Board Secretary for our last submission in November. So obviously, the groundwater is an ongoing thing. It's done through natural attenuation, so it's just something we monitor over time, and it dissipates, and then eventually those wells will be closed. But if they have to be relocated, it's done by our LSRP under DEP jurisdiction. Number 11 is a will comply. 12 is a statement. 13 is a will comply. Under grading, Items G1, 2, and 3, we're all addressed. Page 14, Items 4 through 10, we're all addressed. Under the landscaping, Ms. Kafong will address H1 as it relates to the variance. I believe, actually, I'm sorry, 1, H1, 2, 3, and 4 will all be addressed by our planner. 5 was addressed. 6 talks about the tree replacement. 7 and 8 were addressed. Mr. Euro, 9 and 10 are will comply. 11 was addressed. On the top of Page 16, under environmental, Items I1 was addressed. I2 will provide the, will comply, provide the EIS. Items 3, 4, and 5 were all addressed. Item Number 6, I believe the DEP wetlands and flood hazard permits were submitted as part of the application. However, if Mr. Euro did not receive a copy of that, we'll provide that. But we have received our DEP permits, flood hazard and freshwater wetlands permits. 7 is a statement. 8, I'm unaware of any flood history unless Mr. Maske or Mr. Euro knows of any. Obviously, we did apply and received our DEP flood hazard and wetlands permits, but I'm not aware of any flooding on the site. On the, on the Page 17, under Item 9, this talks about the underground heating tank. Again, we have a RAO for unrestricted use on the site that was issued by our LSRP. And again, it provides, be happy to provide copies to Mr. Euro unto the town if necessary. Under Item J, 1 and 2 are a will comply. Item Number 3, Mr. Maske, if it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to bring up a different exhibit.
Let me mark, this is A2. Now I'm back, communicate what this is.
Sure. This is entitled signage exhibit, Block 155.01, Lots 66 and 67. It was prepared by EP Design Services, and the date is 10/12/20 revised through 10/15/20. This indicates, the two signs that we're proposing for the site, it has on the left-hand side, it has the monument sign that we're proposing for up on 206. It has a, you know, a stainless steel wave, if you will. I know it's hard to see. If I could zoom in on just the commercial one. This is a stainless, piece of stainless steel wave that sits on top of the stainless steel, and then it has a cement board backing here for the signage, and then it's got a cast stone with stone on the bottom to match, will match the retail buildings itself. On the right-hand side is our entry sign for the residential development. Again, this is a brick pillar with some cast stone on it. Again, the brick will match the residential building. It just simply says "The Edge at Hillsborough," which is our naming for our rental communities. Obviously, it says "An Edgewood Properties Community," and has the lighting on it and decorative landscaping around the base. Mr. Chairman, I would defer either now or at the end, if either Mr. Euro or Mr. Maske or the board has comments on the signage. I think this probably made the first time, some of them might be seeing it.
Can you indicate if it's in compliance with the ordinance?
It will be, yes.
In terms of dimensions, lighting, materials, landscaping?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Allenback, can you pull A1 up again, please? Can you indicate on A1 to the board and to the professionals where the monument sign will go and where the entrance sign for the residential will go?
Yeah, the entry sign for residential is located, if you can see my cursor, off of Andrea Avenue when you first pull in on the right-hand side. You can see here, it's shown as an arch because we had an older sign there that would be updated. It'll be located in that area there. I'm sorry, in the retail, let's see if I can zoom in a little bit here, is located immediately to the left of the main driveway when you come in. If you can see this little stick that's located here, that would be where the monument sign is off of 206.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Getting back to the letter under Page 17, Item J4 is a will comply. 5 is a will comply.
Before you go ahead on that, for the record, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bernstein, there's a recommendation by, I guess, Mr. Maske and/or Mr. Euro or both for lot consolidation, and while we will comply, in fact, think that that's appropriate, I just want to make clear that we would like that to be without prejudice because ultimately, later on, for financial purposes, as I'm sure you've heard before and seen, you may want to subdivide the lot in order to refinance the front portion. So although we've agreed certainly to a lot consolidation that exists now, we want to make sure that the record is clear that we're not giving up a right to come back and ask for permission later to subdivide it if, in fact, ownership wants to refinance the front portion. So having said that, unless there are any questions, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask Mr. Allenback to continue. Is that okay?
Mr. Wolfson, for the purpose of record, the applicant will agree as a condition that, for a lot consolidation, subject to the conditions you placed on it, along with a review by my office as to the deed relative to lot consolidation, and if for any reason your client wishes, or your successor wishes to come before, wishes to subdivide the property, they will have to come back to the board.
Absolutely. We absolutely have to come back for subdivision. I just want the record to be clear that our agreement to those terms is without prejudice to that right to come back. We're not waiving, consciously waiving that right. We think it's appropriate, certainly now. And our, our ownership often, not always, but often, will subdivide and refinance what we have in this development like this, the commercial and the residential. I just wanted the record to be clear that we're reserving that right to come back. Thank you, Mr. Bernstein, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think I left off on 17.5, is a will comply, as Mr. Bernstein just spoke about. Under Item Number 6, I would just ask for clarification from Mr. Euro or Mr. Maske. I don't know if this, I'm okay with this if it's referred to at building permit. Obviously, the plans that we have tonight are just conceptual, not to be submitted to the Building Department for ADA compliance.
Yeah, that's just a general statement as you go through the building process, that your buildings are ADA complying, and that will be handled by the building department.
Okay. In that case, we would agree to comply. 17J7 is, was addressed. On top of Page 18, Items Number 8 and 9 were addressed. Item Number 10, we, we spoke about the, at the last hearing, we talked about the air conditioners. There's no condenser units that would be visible. There's only a few condenser units located on top of the residential building for what we refer to as the common areas, but they'll be located on the roof behind parapets that won't be visible. All the units themselves will have individual, what we refer to as wall packs. Again, so there's no condensers located on the ground around the building. The commercial buildings, they're all located with, on the roof. If the smaller pad, it has a condension unit, obviously, it will be appropriately screened with either landscaping or a wall to make sure it's not visible to the public. Item Number 11, we're not proposing any construction trailers at this time. We realize that if we wanted to do something with a construction or leasing trailer, we have to come back to the board. On Item Number 12, you know, we spoke about what we refer to as re-skinning the existing buildings. The interior layouts are still undetermined. Once we figure out, should we be successful and obtain approval, once we figure out what tenants we have, at that point, we'll be able to go in and figure out where the mizing walls will be placed on the interior. The exterior, obviously, whatever we're showing you tonight will be final, but the interior, we don't know yet. For those of you who may be familiar with the site, the larger retail building, if you've been out there, has several steps in the building, so it makes the demising of it a little challenging. So there's, there's 4 and 8-inch steps as you go across the building that deal with the grade. So again, those will all be submitted as part of the building permit process for the demising walls. Item Number 13 and 14 were addressed. Item Number 15, I believe we covered this at the last hearing about the hours of operation of employees and the trucks. Mr. Pankey covered that. And then, on the Item Number 16, we would agree to comply for outside agencies, if they're applicable. And I believe that concludes the T and M report.
So we also got a revised Fire Marshal report from the original one that had a number of items that were a concern to the Fire Marshal. And I'm referring to a December 1, 2021 report, a revised report from the Bureau of Fire Safety.
Excuse me, if I might, before we leave the T and M report, can I ask a question? It has to do with the stormwater. Page 10, I guess it's D16. The plans were revised, and it's about a flared structure. The plans were revised to remove the structure at the end of the grass swells. I mean, the structure was there, and we asked for an elevation, and you just removed the structure. So I don't know that that actually answers the question. Yeah, I'm just interested in why it was removed.
Well, it says it was addressed, but if, not sure what, you know, the, Mr. Euro...
He was asking how it was addressed.
Yeah. I mean, there was a structure there, and it was removed, so it was there for a reason. Why, you know, is removing it fine? I just, I want to understand why it was removed.
Would you prefer to hear from Mr. Euro or from Mr. Bowler?
Whoever's...
Brad, why don't you...
I'm assuming the designer.
Yeah. Well, I think we're doing it at the request of someone, but, Mr. Bernstein, perhaps you'd swear at or in, in Mr. Bowler?
I'll leave that opportunity. Bowler, raise your right hand. Testimony about give truth, all truth, nothing but truth, self-evident.
I do.
Say your full name, spell your last name, and indicate by whom you're employed.
Brad Bowler, last name's Bo, B-O-H-L-E-R, for the Bowler Engineering.
Just for the record, he was qualified as an expert, I believe, last time, Mr. Chairman? Thank you. Can you address the question raised by Mr. Chikrally?
Sure. So the, the previous design had flared sections and pipes higher in the ground. We replaced them with inlets and put the pipes lower in the ground. So the water still drains the same location, just a different, different structure.
Okay. Great. And, well, so, hold on. Did you also address the sanitary sewer?
Yes.
Because there was a similar resolution. The proposed pump station manhole and the end of the force main were also removed. So was it a design change again, or?
Yeah, we were able to design the sanitary sewer system to float via gravity.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It'll be okay, you have to move over just to the Fire Marshal report.
Sure. Yeah, please continue.
Thank you.
Again, as Mr. Wolfson indicated, it's a Fire, Bureau of Fire Safety memo dated December 1st in 2021. This has been, I think about 10 or 12 comments have been removed. There's 2 left, and we agree to comply with both of those.
That would be the end of our recap and summary to the board as to what was done between last time and now. The board or the public have any questions, Mr. Allenback? When that's concluded, we will go on to Ms. Kafong. Oh, my mistake. I apologize. Architectural.
I have a few questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Firing back to my memo of October 20th. I'm trying to go over some of my notes from the last hearing. Most of it has to do with pedestrian access. Trying to my notes, you were going to add a, right, under the previous and apparently the current design, there's only one connection between the residential building and the front. It was one crosswalk.
There's 2.
Okay. Can you point them out?
Yeah, there's one located...
Is that a crosswalk?
Yeah, over here by Andrea, and then there's one over here.
Okay, it wasn't marked.
Oh, and a third one in the right of way, right. Comes across Andrea here.
Sorry, not seeing your arrow.
I'm sorry. The sidewalk that comes down Andrea and then crosses our driveway, there's a crosswalk. It's hard to see with the lines. Let me see if I can zoom in here.
The laser doesn't show up on the screen.
Yeah.
Oh. Disappears.
Really?
Yeah. So it's in this area here. You cut, you walk down Andrea to sidewalk, then there's a crosswalk under here to get you across to continue down on Andrea. So you could...
Okay, just, it's not on this, it's not on here.
Yeah. Crosswalks, I think it's underneath the hatching for the, for the side triangle, but we'll make sure it's shown on there.
Because that was one of the other comments, you were going to add one on 206 and one on Andrea, so you're going to do that, right?
Yes.
Because they're not, they're not on this version. Okay. The other, I mean, to do, okay, a walkway at least 5 feet in width was going to be added to connect the sidewalk area in front of the stores to the sidewalk on Andrea Avenue or request the variance. And my notes said you were going to comply, but I don't see it on this.
Yeah, that's the one I spoke about earlier that has the grade differential.
So you can't do it?
We can't do it, correct.
Okay. Okay, that's it. Thank you. Oh, just one last thing. Any update? Have you touched base with the Board of Education about the school bus stop?
I did not. I reached out to him several times, but I did not get an answer.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
Eric, when I label this A three.
I think it's previously marked.
No, this is no.
Yeah, okay, let's mark it as A three, and Mr. Almbach can indicate what this is.
Sure. This will be A three. It's entitled Hillsborough Mixed Use Development, prepared by EP Design, and is the building elevations for the retail portion of the site.
Do we have a date on this?
There's no date on the, I was prepared today.
Okay, thank you. Can you blow that up so that everybody can see it?
As the board may recall, there was some concern about the materials. We switched over to a masonry material along the facades. That was one of the concerns that board members mentioned last time. You recall, we were showing more of a vertical or horizontal siding last time, so we changed it up. Cement board along the prop, we have metal awnings or canopies located in front of the stores. Again, some cast stone located in and around the building, and this is carried throughout the development itself. I will point out, the brick is all the same color. I know that was a concern raised last time. It's just the way that they did the shadowing. It is all the same color, so I know the left-hand side looks a little grayer than the right-hand side, but it is all the same stone. It's just the way they did the shadowing. Again, on the right-hand side of the photograph shows the building as if you would see from Andrea Avenue, almost as if you came off of the off-ramp and you were facing the shopping center. That's what you would see. Again, a cast stone, the water table base with the masonry stone, it goes all the way up to the parapet itself. There's a metal, aluminum metal coping along the top of the building itself. And then we carry down to what is the freestanding building located, sorry, to the left. Again, one of the concerns was to carry the materials over. Again, we carry the stone all the way from the bottom to the top, just broke it up with two different styles. Metal canopies located or awnings over the windows itself, same treatment on the roof and the parapet area itself, the signage. And again, this was something that we tried to do to match the buildings all the way around. And you can see as it continues across the site, it matches all the way, all the way through the site. That's what we tried to do for the retail buildings themselves. Mr. Chairman, I can move on to the residential building, or I don't know if the board has questions on this, or just wait till the end, whatever you tell me to do.
Anyone got questions on your architectural design? The stainless pad is the same color, though the shading is different, right?
Correct. I will put on a record, it's all the same color.
Yes.
Yeah, on the signage, you had six tenants, I think, right? So I see more than six tenants, I think, when you look at all the way across the property line.
Again, it's just a placeholder at this point. We don't know where the demising walls, it could be one tenant, depending on who comes in. If we have two people that want to occupy on the middle-sized pad, if you will, twenty-five-hundred square foot each, you have two tenants. If somebody comes in once twelve-hundred square foot, you could end up with four.
So you'll just take the space for the tenants, the signage, and just divide it up accordingly?
Yeah, I believe, and Mr. Masky, correct me, the ordinance allows for signs based on the frontage of the store itself, a percentage of that. So every time, if the space gets smaller, the sign has to get smaller with it proportionally because of the linear footage of the facade itself.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Move on to residential, sir.
Yep, let's move on.
All right. Mark this A four.
Sure. Again, this is A four. It is entitled Hillsborough Mixed Use Development. It's the residential building and today's date, prepared by EP Design. Again, if the board may recall, on the last, in October, we showed a building that was predominantly brick, and there was concerns about the look of it. And so we had the architects go through and look and break up the materials. You can see we have like a cement board, it's not, it's not like it is a cement board, located on the corner treatment, the break of the facade. We have horizontal siding or hardy plank located throughout the site, and this kind of breaks it up. Again, the colors were, this one is different colors to try to break at the facade, but again, if the board feels that some of the horizontal siding should be the same, we're just trying to break up the masses of the building. So you can see as you work your way on the front of the building here, the style where we have some of the bump outs, the window treatments, the parapet is, treatments are different on the roof to break up the roof line. As you work away around the corner, there's insets and breaks, so it doesn't have this long monolithic feel to it. There are balconets, if you will, or Romeo and Juliet balconies located on these units themselves here in the front. And those are just, so everybody's aware, when I refer to balconets, they're just sliding glass doors with just railings. You cannot walk out onto the deck, and that's to prevent people from, for us, people putting, storing stuff out there. So they get the feel of a patio, but they just can't walk out to it. So you get to open it and enjoy the fresh air and everything, but we don't have to worry about people putting too much stuff out, it becomes a third closet for everybody. And that's continued straight out the site. So again, I think we try to, you know, break at the facade and try to mix it up with materials and colors that would be satisfactory to the board. And again, I know that the board is really just seeing this and maybe the professionals for the first time, so I'm open for any questions or concerns that you may or may not have as it relates to the residential building.
Anyone from Davis? The stone portion that's on there, is that similar to the color of the stone that's in the retail space?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I think we're good.
Anything else, Mr. Chairman?
Nothing from the board.
David?
Yeah. As Mr. Almbach said, we haven't had a chance to really review the architectural, so I'll just ask you, have you compared this to the ASDO standards, and are you in compliance, or do you need waivers?
No, the architects did follow the standards. That was the direction I had given them because it was transpired at the last meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Is it the board's preference to open Mr. Almbach up to the public, or wait till we finish with Mr. Kafal?
I just have one question based on some testimony that I would. So, and I'm not sure, pardon me if it was brought up at the prior testimony, because it was in October, so I may have forgotten. David, are they requiring a waiver for the trees? Is it one thousand twenty-four to replace the only twenty-seven?
According to my notes, they need a variance for removing more than twenty percent of the trees, so they're moving eighty-five percent. However, they said they will comply with the replacement requirement, mostly in cash.
They're going to pay into the.
They're going to replace thirty-seven trees, I believe. But the balance of the one thousand tree requirement, they would do the cash contribution.
Okay. I don't know.
I imagine that's still.
We will, we're aware of the ordinance, and we will comply with the ordinance provisions.
Regarding the replacement, not regarding the, you still need a variance for removing more than twenty percent, though, correct?
Understood.
Okay, yes.
That's all. Yeah. Let's, we can continue with this. Oh, no, no, oh, you're done. I thought you had more to go.
I believe we're finished this time.
Okay.
And again, I know the board's pleasure whether they want to do the public now.
Yeah, we'll just soap it, yeah, so we don't have to start bringing everyone up and down. So motion, open to public?
So moved.
Second. All favor?
All right.
All right. Okay, if there's anyone from the public that would like to question this witness on his testimony, please come up, state your name and address for the record, spelling
Susan Gulliford, Hunt Club Road, G-U-L-L-I-F-O-R-D. Again, like the board, this is the first time I'm seeing this architectural design. I know we have standards in the township, but I spent one summer working at a Howard Johnson's, and that's what it reminds me of, just as a brief comment. I think it's the big windows that are doing it. Okay, the sign you showed before was the residential sign, correct?
I showed both.
Okay, I missed the other one, then, the directory sign.
Same plan.
It was on the same, oh, okay.
Going on the left-hand side of the retail, on the right-hand side of the residential.
Okay, I thought that was a small, I think I needed a magnifying glass. Okay. I have a question on the parking. You, I think last time and this time, you said you're not going to designate per specific unit because it causes problems, which I understand, because I used to be the person that took the phone calls when the tenants did agree on parking. But you also said the number of spaces is allotted per lease. Somebody who's renting an apartment also has two parking places they may use, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, you have a hundred and eighteen units there. Do you base that on the number of bedrooms in an apartment?
Base what on?
The number of units that are allotted in the lease. My question ultimately is, for the hundred and eighteen units, for the leases you would be writing, how many residential parking places would you need, aside from the Hillsborough Township requirements?
Well, just so you're aware, the parking is required, is done by the state through what they call RSI, or Residential Site Improvement Standards, which dictates the parking requirements for a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, and a three-bedroom unit, and that is what we're complying with. That's what is the basis of how you calculate the formula as to, what Mr. Wilson said earlier, based on that, those calculations, and based on the number of spaces we have, we have a surplus of twenty spaces as it exists right now.
Okay. I was asking because it seemed as though you were moving back and forth your residential and your commercial or retail spaces, depending on what the board's preference was or what was needed based on what tenants you had.
No, we're not, I'll respond to that. We're not moving our spaces back and forth. We have spaces that we've proposed, and we comply with the residential standards. We're short on the commercial, and if the board was concerned that there weren't enough spaces, because we were overparked on the residential, we could designate some for the commercial, if the board so chose. I know we will leave that to the board's discretion.
Okay, the parking on the left side of your exhibit, the southernmost parking place, near the Cafe Grazziella and whatever restaurant ends up there, that restaurant has a drive-thru component?
The smaller, yes.
Yes, okay. Are you also designating several spaces as, I don't know what they're called, the, a space for people that are waiting for a large order? I've seen this come up in other designs for drive-throughs.
Yeah, we are not, we're not proposing that right now, because we don't have a tenant. It all depends on, it's usually tenant-driven, but typically what happens, short of having design spaces or designated spaces, is if there's an issue with the drive-through and your order's not ready, I believe is what you're talking about.
That's, yeah, I just don't know what they're called.
They would be asked to be pulled up into a regular parking space so that their order can be brought out to them. Depending on who the tenant ends up being, sometimes they will require or request that one or two spaces be designated for either what you want to call a mobile pickup or drive-through pickup, and just for that, that case.
Okay, I'm asking because recently I saw two different applications that designated several spaces for a pickup for a large order, that type of thing.
Yeah, typically, it's tenant-driven, depending on who the tenants are.
Okay, thank you.
Maria Janus, six, seven, twenty, East Freck Avenue, Manville, New Jersey. Comments were made about the prior meetings and what was discussed at the prior meetings. Is there a verbatim transcript of the prior public hearings for JSM at Hillsborough LLC?
Yes.
Not at this time.
Right, not available to the public.
Not at this time, okay, so it's difficult to know what exactly had been discussed at the prior meetings.
There's a YouTube video for the October fourteenth meeting.
Excuse me?
There's a YouTube video available.
How many, how many meetings have there been for JSM prior to this?
Well, the bulk of this was on October fourteenth. The others were very brief meetings.
Okay.
Just reschedule.
I would say that's an accurate statement, because we were required to make significant changes to the plan. So what happened at the original meeting is really very, very little relationship to the ultimate plans that are presently before the board.
So the most important would be the last one, and when, in October?
October fourteenth.
Okay. So according to the agenda, there are, there are, there are two separate land parcels, Block one fifty-five point zero one, Lot sixty-six, and then Block one fifty-five point zero one, Lot sixty-seven. And there is an application to, the applicant is seeking to, approval to merge these two lots, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so are they, are both of these lots in the same zone?
Yes.
What zone is that?
Not sure what they designated. It's part of an overall rezoning for the Mount Laurel Settlement.
It's in the Gateway A zone.
Okay, we, yeah.
Within an overlay district.
Thank you.
What is it?
Gateway A.
Gateway A?
Zone.
And that was, and that's based on what, on the ordinance? Based on the ordinance that was adopted specifically for these two properties?
Yes, this is. Yes, this is under the mixed-use inclusionary overlay district within the GA Gateway A district.
Okay. Are these the only two properties that are in that district?
No.
There are other, other properties in this Gateway A, I think, I think.
There are other properties in the Gateway A zone, yes.
A zone, is this one, this one's Gateway A?
Mr. Chairman, I don't really like to be rude, but, you know, I want to make sure we finish. There's three questions of Mr. Almbach, not of Mr. Masky.
Because the, there was an ordinance specifically for this, for this property. A, it was A.
Could I ask the chair to direct?
A, A's?
Our witness questions, please.
Because, because what?
Mr. Chairman, you said you'll have an opportunity for comments at the end of whole testimony. Please just address questions.
But what is in the ordinance?
But that, please address.
What this applicant has to abide by?
Then you will need to save that question at the end.
That's my point.
It has nothing to do with the testimony.
They have to abide by the requirements of that ordinance. So right now, you have two separate land parcels, so when you apply for a letter of interpretation, you have to get a letter of interpretation for each separate.
No.
Parcel since they are separate?
No.
No. And so you're combining the two, even though they are two separate land parcels?
The application stands on its own. We filed an application, it was deemed complete, it's been reviewed by the township professionals and the board. Several occasions now, we've made changes in accordance with the requests and observations and comments of the board and professionals, and these plans are the product of those interactions, conversations, and revisions. And these plans have been on file.
So, so you want to merge these two, these two properties? One is going to be commercial, one residential, but then you want to also have the option to subdivide them again?
Reserving the right, if necessary, for finance purposes to subdivide it so that the commercial property may be refinanced separate and apart from the residential, which may be refinanced.
So each of those may need to be, each, each one may need to be refinanced?
Reserving our right to do so if the ownership wants to. It's been done before in other applications in this town.
Excuse me?
It's been done before in other properties in this town that were, that are large. Every town. Yeah.
So, so you merge them, and then later on, you can.
Well, as financing needs to be done on certain parts of the project, they are allowed. The line won't be in the same place. If it's, if it's subdivided, the line that exists now, that disappears with the lot consolidation, is not necessarily where the new line will be drawn. And if there is to be a new line drawn, we have to come back to this board and ask for a subdivision and prove our case.
Something that hasn't been.
Would you please ask questions of this witness?
Okay, is JSM at Hillsborough an intervenor in the court mandated for housing?
Not in this.
That wouldn't be, he would not be qualified to answer such a question.
Okay, will there be a witness who will answer these questions? Because we're discussing this whole application, but these are all preliminary things to this application. Because why was there, why was, why was there a change to the zone through an ordinance if?
Well, the appropriate time for that question would have been at the public hearing of that ordinance, so let's just keep it germane to the witness.
Okay.
Testimony.
Okay, except like I said, we're going to discuss all of this when you don't have the initial information as to whether this applicant is an intervenor, whether this applicant has a settlement. has a settlement agreement for the court mandated for housing.
Mr. Janusak, this isn't your first planning board meeting. You know what the procedure is. And I would appreciate you, you keep two questions to the testimony of the witness at hand, and then you know at the very end, when general comments are allowed, you can ask anything you want. And it's been the same at every meeting you've attended over the past three years that I've been sitting here, okay?
In the last couple of meetings that I've attended, there was no opportunity for the public to ask those questions.
That was, depending on the application, there were some that was not, but that was mandated by the settlement, by the judge, Mr., so, but under normal circumstances, you know the rules.
It was, it was a meeting that was, that was very long, and so the last.
So do you have a question of this testimony, so we can move on?
I want, I want to state that we don't have an opportunity to ask.
You always have an opportunity.
Please, Mr. Janusak, please continue. You could have, you could have made that commentary at the beginning of this planning board meeting.
Okay, why, why do you need connectivity between the commercial property and the residential development?
Why do I need connectivity?
Why do you need connectivity? These are two separate, two separate, one is commercial and one is residential. Why do you, why do you need to connect the two?
So the residential, because it's a different use, should not have the availability to walk to the commercial?
No, I'm just asking, why do you need the connectivity?
So that the people that live there can get to the stores?
So it's, so it's not, it's not a requirement, it's for the purpose of allowing those people?
It's also, it's also a requirement of the ordinance.
It is a requirement.
Yes.
That's what I'm asking. It's a, it's a requirement, okay? Not that people can walk to the store.
Both.
Okay. In regard to the drainage, that's kind of been skipped over today. Where is the storm?
I suppose we spent hours on the last one.
No, we spent a lot of time on the parking spaces, a lot of time, on the parking spaces at the prior meeting and also at this meeting. So in regard to the drainage, where, where's the stormwater going to be draining to?
Mr. Chairman, I didn't testify to any of the drainage.
You need to wait for the engineer.
Okay, but, because that was brought up.
But not by this testimony.
Mr. Chairman, our engineer is here, and when we finish with Mr. Allmack, if Mr. Janusak wants to ask the engineer that question, we'll certainly allow that.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, you stated that the flood hazard area permits have been provided by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection?
Yes.
For this project?
Yes.
They do have, they do have a permit for the flood hazard area?
I have a permit. We, we have a permit. They issued us a permit.
For this, for this project?
Correct.
Okay. In regard to the monitoring wells, you say that, how long of those, how long of those monitoring wells going to be at this site?
No idea how, how long. It's, it's, I covered it the last time we were here in October. I mentioned it again today. It's a groundwater issue that's done through natural attenuation. Natural attenuation is something that takes time. That means the water dissipates and gets cleaner over time. There's no way to, there's no science that tells you, or engineering that says it's going to be there for one year, two years, five years. There's no way. It's until the tests come up clean.
To just have this continue the way it is?
It's approved by the DEP.
What is approved by the DEP?
The method that we're using is approved by the DEP, and overseen by the DEP.
Okay. Is that, is that the only, only environmental issue, the contamination? Because I think also there had been issue with vapor intrusion?
As I discussed, in October, and again early tonight, all the other environmental issues have been addressed, and I have a remedial action outcome for unrestricted use, which means, in layman's terms, a no further action, no other work for us required. It's all been cleaned up to DEP standards.
Okay, so you're saying that the, the problem with the, with the, with the chemicals from the dry cleaning business, that they still continue to have the issue with the vapor, that that is okay, and that is going to be permissible for the residential housing?
That's not what I said.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I'm sorry. We have our permits.
Because that isn't, because that is an issue.
Speak into the mic, Mr. Wilson. Speak into the mic.
DEP has approved what we've done. That's it. Move on.
Yeah, Mr. Janusak, if you've got questions, you should just add to the DEP.
Okay, you kind of went over a memo from Mr. Euro, but you didn't really go into any kind of detail. Some things you just said that's been done, that's been done, that's been done. What's, what's been done?
Mr. Chairman, I really don't know how we can answer that question. There's a memo, the memo says, been reviewed by Mr. Euro's office, addressed, meaning whatever he was requesting, we did. That's what addressed means. So you.
Okay, except that we don't know what, what that was?
Well, the memo's in the file. You could have looked at it.
It's a public documents, ma'am.
It's a public document?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Why aren't some of those public documents provided here if that's going to be?
They're available, as I say at the beginning of the meeting, they're available online.
On to the clerk.
Okay. There were some changes made to the stormwater. Is the stormwater?
This is not the witness for that.
Redesigning?
If you really have a stormwater question.
That'll be for engineer.
Okay, sanitary sewer also, if something, something was, changes were made with the sanitary sewer that also?
Mr. Bowler just went over that five minutes ago.
Yeah, well, when he comes back, you can ask him that.
Okay, because it's difficult, it was, couldn't hear him back, even though not that far back, I could not hear anything he was saying. Also, there was a fire marshal's report, which was complied with, but what were, what were the issues with the fire marshal?
There were in the memo that is available public. I mean, we're not going to go bullet point by bullet point.
The bottom line is they would comply with anything that was, that was brought up by the fire marshal.
Okay. So I will have an opportunity to ask in regard to the settlement agree, if there is a settlement agreement, what was approved by, by Judge Thomas, Thomas C. Miller and the, who was it, court master? I'll be able to ask that later on.
I don't know if we have a witness here that could answer that question.
But that would be at the end.
Well, who, who would be a witness to that?
Court docket, probably. That's on file, could probably provide the information you're looking for.
So pretty much I won't be, be able to get an answer to that.
Depending on what your question is, and we won't know that till you ask it at the end of the application, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, how you doing, Tina? Do you need a break?
I think we're about.
I think we're about to switch. That's why I'm asking.
The only question I have, Mr. Chairman, is you finish with Mr. Allmack.
Thank you.
Did the Chair want me to go to Ms. Cofone, or do you want Mr. Bowler to try to answer those last two questions that relate to stormwater drainage in this?
Does he have additional testimony besides?
No.
The drainage, no?
No.
No, we're not planning on any additional testimony affirmatively.
Okay.
But if she has a specific question that we directed away from Mr. Allmack, because it related to what Mr. Bowler testified to at length, he is here, and he can answer the question. I don't need to stifle anybody.
No, no.
But I want to finish.
I'm just trying to make sure. Tina, you think you can answer more minutes, two questions? Let's, okay.
Mr. Janusak, you want to come back and ask Mr. Bowler those questions?
Okay, so, again, we're still open to the public, and the engineer.
Mr. Bowler, you're still under oath.
So if anyone has questions on the engineer's testimony to those two items he addressed earlier, please come up.
Okay, I heard that.
Maria Janusak, just say your name again.
Excuse me?
Just put your name again on record.
Maria Janusak.
Thank you.
I heard that there were revisions made to the sanitary sewer, or is the change where it's going to be connected somewhere else? Can I get some information on that? And also in regard to the storm?
You asking what the change was? Is that what you're asking?
Change or revisions, whatever was done with the sanitary sewer, yes.
Let me just answer the question. You want Mr. Bowler to say what the changes were from the original submission to now?
Yes.
Can Mr. Bowler answer that question?
Yes. So the sanitary sewer used to go back to Deanna Drive and, and tie into the street in that location. It's been revised to connect into Andrea Avenue.
Is there a reason for that?
The request from the town to remove the sanitary sewer from their buffer, and also the DRCC requested it.
Who did?
DRCC, Delaware and Riordan Dikina.
Canal Commission requested it also?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions of Mr. Bowler?
Regarding the, regarding the stormwater, where does that drain to?
The commercial parking lot drains to Andrea Avenue, under, under existing pipes that run through the property, and the residential drains to Deanna area, where there's an inlet in the back.
And where does that drain to from there?
The Royce Brook.
To the Royce Brook?
Yes.
Has there a study been done as far as flooding the Royce Brook? Because there are a lot of developments that also?
Not a statement by you. A question of Mr. Bowler, please.
Are there, has a study been done as to other developments who are also draining to the Royce Brook?
Has Mr. Bowler done a study, is the question? We wouldn't know anybody else did a study.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bowler, did we do a study?
Absolutely, yes. Mr. Bowler, have you done a study, or do you know of a study that was done to see how much water, how, how much water is draining from other developments into the Royce Brook?
The only study that I'm aware of is the FEMA study that was prepared for flood mapping, and that's used for our DEP permit.
What's, but how recent is that, is that study?
I don't know the exact date of the study.
You got a DEP permit based on it, though.
That's correct.
DEP permit based on the FEMA study?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else? Susan, anyone else? Okay, so I think what we're going to do is we're going to take about, you need, 10?
10.
We'll take a 10-minute break.
So 9:05.
Yeah, we'll reconvene at 9:05.
Good morning, and welcome to the opening of the Peter J. Biondi Route 206 bypass here in Hillsborough Township. Thank you for joining us here today for this very much anticipated event here. Can't think of one that we've been waiting for longer, as we open the remaining sections of this vital roadway which has been named in memory of the late Assemblyman Peter J. Biondi. This roadway will officially open for traffic on Saturday, June 5th. I'm joined here today by my colleagues, the Hillsborough Township Committee, Deputy Mayor Frank Delkor, Committeeman Doug Thompson, Committeewoman Janine Erickson, and Committeeman Jeffrey Wright. I would also like to thank this opportunity to introduce some other guests here this morning. Senator Kip Bateman, who was a sponsor of the legislation to actually get this name, this road named after the late Assemblyman Biondi, and thank you for that. Assemblyman Roy Fryman, Commissioner Paul Drake, and please help me welcome Ms. Joan Biondi. Thank you for being here today on this historic day for Hillsborough Township. The late Assemblyman Peter J. Biondi was a pillar in our community for over 35 years. As a result of time serving the community as a member of the Township Committee, mayor, freeholder, and Assemblyman, he was often referred to as Mr. Hillsborough. During his entire tenure in public life, he remained committed to the betterment of Hillsborough. His tireless dedication and support of Hillsborough was unwavering, hence why the 2013, in 2013, this roadway was officially named after Peter J. Biondi. The bypass is a vital part of Hillsborough's economic development. Not only will it bypass lessen congestion and traffic along the existing 206, but it'll also serve as the impetus for a future town center that is envisioned in our Township Master Plan. This long-awaited, a much-anticipated vision is now a reality. Originally considered in the early 1970s, as the Hillsborough Township began to develop, unfortunately, it remained only a concept until the early 2000s. In August 2010, Township local and state officials broke ground to officially start the construction of the bypass at midsection, somewhere where we're standing right now. We thank past and current state administrators for their diligence in seeing this project through. This portion will shift traffic on the new 3.6-mile section of US 206 to the east of the existing highway between Mountain View Road and Old Somerville Road, creating the opportunity for further development of the town center along the current 206. The project limits are from Mountain View Road to Hillsborough Road on the southern end, and from Animal Road, Somerset County Route 514, to Old Somerville Road on the northern end. To the north, the widening will work, will continue until the final phase is complete. We have looked forward to this day, and we now look forward to the development of our downtown Hillsborough Main Street vision. Please stay tuned as we continue to grow and improve and remain as one of the best places to live and work in America. Again, thank you all for being here this morning. We will now have the official ribbon cutting, and that will conclude our ceremony. And again, thank you to our honored guests who are here today, and Ms. Joan Biondi, and thank you very much. One, two, three. Hillsborough, New Jersey, celebrating 250 years of a rich history.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sean LaPony, and I'm proud to showcase Hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From the preserved farms that help feed the world, to the Van de Veer House, to the John R. Stott's House, restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms.
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds.
To the iconic Neshannick Reformed Church, and just down the road is our fabulous Neshannick Mill located right on the picturesque Rowerton River. You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New Jersey. Hillsborough, New Jersey, celebrating 250 years of a rich history.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sean LaPony, and I'm proud to showcase Hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From the preserved farms that help feed the world, to the Van de Veer House, to the John R. Stott's House, restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms.
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds.
To the iconic Neshannick Reformed Church, and just down the road is our fabulous Neshannick Mill located right on the picturesque Rowerton River. You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New Jersey. Hillsborough, New Jersey, celebrating 250 years of a rich history.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sean LaPony, and I'm proud to showcase hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From the preserved farms that help feed the world, to the Van de Veer House, to the John R. Stott's House, restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms.
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds.
To the iconic Neshannick Reformed Church, and just down the road is our fabulous Neshannick Mill located right on the picturesque Rowerton River. You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New Jersey. Hillsborough, New Jersey, celebrating 250 years of a rich history.
Hi, I'm Mayor Sean LaPony, and I'm proud to showcase hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America.
From the preserved farms that help feed the world, to the Van de Veer House, to the John R. Stott's House, restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms.
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds.
To the iconic Neshannick Reformed Church, and just down the road is our fabulous Neshannick Mill located right on the picturesque.
Mill located right on the picturesque Rowerton River. You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New Jersey.
Counselor, next witness.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to introduce you to the fabulous and talented Christine Cofonne.
I'll talk to the mayor about the temperature.
Yes, someone to swear her in, please.
Thank you.
Cofonne, with testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help your cause?
Yes.
State your full name, spell your last name for the record, by whom you're employed, and what certifications or licenses you hold.
Okay, yes, good evening, Chairman, may I sit down?
Yes, please, talk to the mic.
I'll do my best, try to go to school on line, I don't want to get too close.
So, Ms. Cofonne, you haven't testified in this case yet, so would you answer Mr. Bernstein's questions so we can demonstrate your qualifications as an expert in planning?
Yes, good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. For the record, Christine Nazzaro, N-A-Z-Z-A-R-O, Cofonne, C-O-F-O-N-E, and I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I have been testifying as such for 26 years. My licenses are current and valid. I have a PP, which is the State Planning License, as well as an AICP, National Planning License. I have been qualified in Hillsborough before both your Planning and Zoning Board and in well excess of 400 other Planning and Zoning Boards throughout the state, so I give a lot of testimony. I am also an Affordable Housing Special Master. While I am not your Affordable Housing Special Master, that is Ms. McManus, I am very familiar with the affordable housing process, as I am an Affordable Housing Special Master in dozens of municipalities.
Okay, any objections?
Obviously, no objections, so we accept, please proceed. Ms. Cofonne, you've been involved in this project from the beginning. There are some requests for variances and waivers that are part of this application. Let's go through them for the board so they understand what we're asking for and why we think they're justified.
Certainly, so yes, the subject property is in the mixed-use inclusionary overlay district within the GA Gateway A zoning district. So the use is completely conforming. There is nothing here that we don't conform with as far as use, or for that matter, the bulk criteria for the GA Gateway A zone and the overlay. And when I say the bulk criteria, I mean the setbacks, the building height, the impervious coverage, all of that is complied with. So clearly, the intensity and the use program that was envisioned for this zoning district is being met by this application. As this board well knows, this is an existing, developed, and a bit of a tired shopping center. To say that it lacks curb appeal is an understatement. Mr. Bowler described the landscaping, which he, I believe his statement was that it's in poor condition. I would say that the site overall really does lack curb appeal. So we need a handful of variances that are predominantly and mostly related to the existing conditions on this subject property. Now, we are making them dramatically better as far as the appearance of the subject property, but nonetheless, we do still need some variance relief. So the variances, and some of them are very technical in nature, and they have been identified by other witnesses. And when I finish identifying them, I will go through the statutory criteria, the C1 and C2 criteria that we have to go through as planners, and you have to evaluate as the board, and I'll also talk a little bit about the master plan and some purposes of the zone plan and the negative criteria. But just so everyone's clear, because we did have our first meeting on Zoom, then we had our October meeting, so I'll go through the list of variances that I still have in conjunction with this application, which is that Section 113 dot 1 F3D, which requires that impervious material shall not be placed over the critical root zone of a preserved tree, which is a ratio of 1 inch per 1-foot radius around the tree. So we violate that in just two locations for our, for existing trees. One is on the western portion of the site, one is along 206, and that is simply because we have impervious coverage there now, and we're removing and replacing that impervious coverage. So it really is somewhat of an existing condition, but particularly along 206, we're coming a little bit closer to that existing tree. So it's not something that I think anybody would really notice as being dramatically different than exists on the center today, but nonetheless, it's a variance. We require a variance that requires loading outdoor storage and service areas that face adjacent residential uses or public right-of-way have an earthen berm that is at least 6 feet in height and contains at a minimum evergreen trees planted at intervals of 20 feet on center and 7 evergreen shrubs per tree. And that's Section 113 dot 1 F7A of the ordinance, and that occurs along our western property line, which is an existing, again, an existing, developed, and disturbed area, and we're really meeting and matching and supplementing what exists there today. Last time we were together, we talked about the fencing in that area, and we had agreed as a condition of approval that where that fence may be in a state of disrepair, or a little bit broken or pushed in, that we would replace that fence in kind. So there is a solid stockade fence there, and we are certainly supplementing the landscaping in there. But if you look at the screen, you can certainly see that that is an existing condition, and there's really no way for us to comply with that as we are reskining and repurposing much of this existing center. So that is a variance, though. And then we need, the next one is really very technical in nature, because this requires trees to be, it's Section 113 1H2B, which requires trees to be installed between the sidewalk and the street line fronting Route 206 and Andrea Avenue, and we are proposing them there. If you had an opportunity to look at the landscaping plan, you will see that we are proposing the street trees. It's just that there is a utility easement there that precludes us from placing them in exactly that location. So again, unless you are very familiar with the plan and you knew that there was a utility there and that the street trees weren't exactly precisely in the right location, you wouldn't even realize that, because we are proposing them, they're just not exactly in the right location. The next variance is Section 113 dot 1K10G. A pedestrian walkway of at least 5 feet in width shall connect the sidewalk area in front of the stores to the sidewalk on Andrea Avenue where no such sidewalk, where no connecting sidewalk is provided. That is really just in that one area, which is on the eastern corner of the existing building. Mr. Allmack showed you where that was earlier, and I think what's important is if you go out on Andrea today, on Andrea Avenue, there are sidewalks there, and it stops really about at the corner of the commercial building. The applicant is proposing to continue that sidewalk along Andrea. So you will have a complete sidewalk network along Andrea from Andrea out to 206, as well as multiple 3 connection points internally. I think that that's important. Your master plan thinks that's important, too. In 2018, when you looked at your master plan, I'll get to that a little bit later, it talks about connectivity. So that's definitely important from a planning point of view, but that's a very technical variance, and there is a grade change in that area that actually precludes us from doing it. But the spirit, I can assure you as a board, the spirit and intent of that ordinance is being met, as we have a complete sidewalk network that goes along Andrea, as well as along the eastern side of the building, as well as connecting at multiple points these two portions of our site. So the next variance that we require is for the minimum parking space size of 10 by 20 spaces are required, where 9 by 18 parking spaces are proposed for this development. You heard plenty of testimony at length on this, as far as the fact that we are proposing really a combination of 10 by 20 and 9 by 18 spaces. We think we chose the most highest turnover spaces to have the 10 by 20, the wider spaces. Certainly, we can accomplish having a few more parking spaces on site if we did fewer 10 by 20, so that's something that we are going to continue to request that variance. But again, it's an existing condition on the center today. So the center has 9 by 18, and this is something that we deal with and we balance as planners and applicants when we're dealing with existing conditions on the property. So I think we are continuing to request that variance. We are requesting a variance for the commercial drive aisle width of 30 feet required, where 24 feet is proposed. That is between the two, the two buildings, and there are sidewalks on both sides of that, so we are proposing that drive aisle of 24 feet. We had some testimony from our engineer on that, and that is Section 188 dash 68E1.
Can we tell the engineer to be the traffic engineer, Mr. Penkey?
Correct, and I think Mr. Bowler testified, or might have mentioned that as well. And then we are asking for a variance for the number of commercial parking spaces, and that is Section 188 dash 68E3. There's also been a lot of testimony on this. Mr. Penkey testified as to the adequacy of the parking on site, and Mr. Allmack also testified about his experience and the applicant's experience operating these type of centers. This is not their first, second, third, or 20th center that they've tenanted like this. So they're very experienced at the mix of tenants and getting the right mix of tenants and having available parking for them. It's important to them, so they're very confident that the mix of tenants that they will be able to put into this building, that they'll have adequate parking, will ensure that. They have a great track record in doing that, but, so we do need that variance. We can, again, come a little bit closer by doing the less 10 by 20, more 9 by 18, but we are requesting that variance. We are also asking for a variance from Section 113 dot 1F4, which talks about parking areas located behind or on the side of the buildings. And as you can see, the parking lot, the parking is in the front of those buildings, which is again, an existing condition. And then we need another variance for Section 113 dot 1F4, which requires that each parking space shall be within 50 feet of a planted or retained tree trunk. And again, as you can see, the western portion of the site and the developed nature of the site precludes us from meeting that in all cases. But, you know, why, why do we have those type of standards in our ordinance? It's because we certainly don't want to create a sea of asphalt like is out there today with no trees being next to the landscaping and no bushes and shrubs, but I think we have a robust landscape plan that was provided and reviewed by your professionals in conjunction with this application, and that is, again, largely an existing condition. It is also somewhat of a proposed condition in the rear portion of the site, but again, we're confident with the landscaping that we proposed. We are also asking a variance for the tree mitigation, and I apologize, I don't have the exact site for that, but I'll get it from Mr. Maskey's review letter if you give me a second. It's the percentage of, the percentage that we're violating of the clearing. We are allowed to have 20%, and I think we're about 85% of clearing on this, so that requires a variance. And then we are also asking for a variance from Section 113 dot 1F7E, which your ordinance requires that we circulate, we separate truck, truck delivery and customer traffic. And I think Mr. Euro acknowledges in his most recent review letter dated December 6 of 2021, that we have done that, you know, to the best of our ability, but I think we may still need a technical, a technical variance there. So that's the variance relief. I know, you know, if you read it, it might sound like a lot, but if you actually break it down and unpack it, you can certainly see that it is all being generated by existing conditions, or predominantly being generated by existing conditions on the property. And why that is important is because statutorily, this board can grant variances under the C1 or C2 criteria. One of the things that you can grant a C1 variance for is lawful pre-existing structures. So I think in, in almost every situation here, the lawful pre-existing structures are dictating where the applicant and how the applicant can develop this site. So I think the C1 statutory criteria are certainly, and this is a textbook, if you will, C1 application. In the absence of any C1 criteria, however, the board can still move on this variance package if you found that one or more purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by the grant of the application. Statutorily, we would only have to advance one, and those are not unique to the, to Hillsborough Township. They're certainly not my crafty planning lingo that I've come up with in these 26 years of practicing. They're taking right out of the municipal land use law at Section 40, colon, 55, D dash 2, and they're identified by letter. So the ones that I think are advanced by this application are Criteria A, which talks about promoting the general welfare. This is an inclusionary development, and it is certainly consistent with the stated purpose of both the GA district, as well as the purpose of the mixed-use inclusionary overlay district. The mixed-use, God bless you, overlay district is specifically to provide an incentive for the construction of affordable multifamily housing in the Gateway A district. The purpose of the Gateway A district is to promote land uses along Route 206 next to the town center, and that are supposed to function as a transition between the highway and the emerging town center. This application absolutely does all of that, and so, and it repurposes an existing, old, tired, you know, center. So I think certainly the board can look at Criteria A. Criteria G talks about providing sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. When you look at the fact that the master plan, which was last reexamined here in 2018, calls for providing employment centers close to residential development to reduce vehicular traffic and encourage alternative modes of transportation. When you look at the fact that the housing goals talk about providing housing to serve all ages, economic segments, and family sizes according to state law, and when you look at, most importantly, that economic development goal in the 2018 master plan, which talks about promoting the redesign of existing commercial sites to provide more efficient land use patterns through such approaches as reduced curb cuts, interconnecting driveways, improved pedestrian and bicycle linkages, and enhanced landscaping. This application hits all of those points and all of those goals that are referenced in the master plan. So I think the board can certainly come to the conclusion that Criteria G is advanced. Criteria G, Criteria I of the land use law talks about creating a desirable visual environment. I think that we certainly listened to the board. I know you weren't happy last time when we were here. You didn't like the architecture. We missed the mark a little bit there on the brick. It wasn't what you were looking for. I think we came back with something that is more appealing. We know that the board is concerned that the structures, the commercial structures, the residential structures, and the new restaurant pad all have a continuous, you know, continuous architectural theme, and we intend to comply with that. So I think the board can certainly be comfortable that the colors and materials will be unified through the site. We'd of course accept that, you know, as any approval. So I think Criteria I is satisfied. And then Criteria M, which talks about an efficient use of the lands, and that language is actually used right in the master plan, and when it talks about economic development and promoting the redesign of existing commercial sites. So why all this is important and why we go through so much time as planners to sort of look at your master plan and unpack the purposes of the zone and look at the intent of these things is because regardless of the C, whether you're applying the C1 or C2 statutory criteria, I have an obligation to testify to the negative criteria. You as a board use that to evaluate the impacts of the application. And the negative criteria, the municipal land use law does not ask you to hold JSM or any other applicant to a standard that there be no detriment, just that the benefits of the grants of the variances outweigh any detriment. And when you look at the betterments of this site, and you look at the fact that we are improving the stormwater management, we are improving the architecture and the curb appeal, we are improving the landscaping significantly, we are improving pedestrian connectivity along Andrea Avenue. I'm challenged as a planner to see where we're having a substantial detriment, and we're doing all of this while providing a site that has 24% in inclusionary development on it, and having you have the opportunity to meet your constitutionally mandated obligation to provide for affordable housing, and to provide for affordable housing for all ages, economic segments, and family sizes, which is what your master plan in 2018 called for. So when you look at this, I think statutorily, this, like I said, is a textbook application for the C1 criteria, but I think the C2 are also applied, and I think as far as the negative criteria, I can't see how any of these variances, which are predominantly relating to existing conditions on the property, would rise to the level of a substantial, substantial detriment that would have either a negative impact on either the zone plan, or the master plan, or the public good here in the township of Hillsborough. And that's what, like I said, why we take such time to go through the stated purposes and intents of those zones, because that's what you have to look at. You look at the variance, and you balance, and you have to weigh. So again, I am at a loss for a lack of impacts, and I feel that we have really mitigated those. And then we do need a couple of waivers in conjunction with this application, and the test of the waivers is really just the reasonableness of the waivers to meet the intent of your ordinance. We are asking, and they have all been testified to by other witnesses, but I'll just, I'll just address them, it won't take long, I know the board is starting to, you hear a lot of testimony, I know. So we're asking for a waiver for the loading berth. We're four required, we're only proposing, I believe, one, but we are having an additional loading area, and Mr. Penkey testified to that. We're also asking for a little bit of relief on the size of that loading berth. I think it needs to be 60 feet in depth, and we're providing 50 feet. We need a variance for, or I'm sorry, a waiver for the light pole heights. So we needed a variance for the height and the intensity of the lights. So we needed a variance for the height and the intensity of the lights. A waiver, sorry, a waiver for the, and that was testified to again by both Mr. Pankey and Mr. Bowler as to the height of the lights and why they need to be the height that they are. So, and how they provide, having the lights at the height we're proposing could create a more uniform light pattern. So they provide for a more efficient lighting layout. And then I think we're also asking for a waiver for tree diamonds and larger planting islands, where we're asking for narrower islands and peninsulas too, than we are supposed to have. So those are the waivers that we're asking for. Again, pretty de minimis. And when you look at the relief that we're asking for, the board can certainly come to the conclusion, in my opinion, that these waivers are necessary for the applicant to redevelop this site, but still carry out the purpose and intent of the ordinance.
Thank you, Ms. Cafone. I will tell the board that Rutgers hit a three at the buzzer to win and beat the number one team in the country 70 to 68.
That's relevant testimony. That concludes our proof, Mr. Chairman. The board or the public have questions? Mr. Cafone, we're of course ready to answer them.
Okay, David.
Just a couple of points of clarification. Did we ever establish what the exact parking deficiency was in terms of numbers?
Yeah, based upon the existing plans, we're at 166 as opposed to 202 on the commercial.
On the commercial, 166 or 202.
And we've given options to the board should they want to make that less or eliminate it entirely, at the board's pleasure. We're comfortable with our plan. We think it's safe and adequate. But if the board were inclined to believe that more was necessary.
Just so we know what variance you're looking for.
Right, 166 versus 202.
That's what you're asking the board to approve. Lastly, the question about the bank parking, whether it's going to be bank parking or serve as a buffer. If you go bank parking, you need a variance for the buffer. If the board agrees to let the bank parking go and turn that into a landscaped area, then you don't need the variance for the buffer.
Correct.
So we need to establish that.
Same thing up to the board. We're comfortable leaving it the way it is with no variance for either the coverage or the buffer. But if the board wants that to be used for parking and knows that it will create that variance, obviously we'll accommodate whatever the board's desire is.
Thank you.
Bob? Okay. Comments from the board? Yes, questions? So I'm just going to ask you, the options for the parking, can we just get those summarized just so that, you know, the board members know what the options are?
I would ask Mr. Allmack to locate it for the board's education in the publics. There is a parking just to the rear of the retail area, which is at the moment not allocated for the retail and is applied towards the residential. As a result, the residential is overparked by 20 spaces. There are 16 spaces in that, in that area. They could be designated for employee parking only, signed appropriately and enforced through our leases, since we're the owner. And that would then add 16 parking spaces to the 166, which would put you at 182.
I thought you mentioned it was 18 parking spots.
Yeah, just so we're clear, it shows 18 on it, but what happens is you end up losing four spaces in the, if you look at where my cursor is, on the drive aisle in this area here, when you open up to get into the parking area, you lose four here. So it's a net gain of 14.
Eighteen less four.
So it's 14 there. And then the mix of 10 by 18s and 9 by 18s, we have, I think, 73. What was the exact number?
Seventy-six.
We have 76 10 by 18s. If those 76 were made 9 by 18, you would pick up 11 more spaces in the commercial area. So that would take you from 166 plus the 14, which gives you 180. And then the 11 there would give you 191. You may get some bonuses for the EV, but obviously that's not real spaces. And then we'd still be short by 12 or 11.
Eleven.
And, and then there's the land bank, which if you made it parking, we'd be over. We'd be compliant. We think, and I would defer to Mr. Maskey and the board, I think it's better to leave that as a landscape buffer area. But those are all options that, to me, are the board's choice, whatever the board's pleasure is. We're okay with any of all of them. We're comfortable with our plan the way it is. We think that it's safe, secure. Our tenants will be good with it. We would ask for the variance for the 166. But like I said, it's certainly up to the board if they think that that's a problem in any way.
And what were the difference in sizes of the parking lot, the parking spaces?
10 by 18 versus 9 by 18.
Okay, so you're going to make them a little bit narrower.
I mean, typically the standard these days with a variety of number of cars that are as small as 9 by 18, but a lot of towns, besides Hillsboro, still require 10 by 20s in certain retail areas. We think that the way we've designed it, where there's a high volume, there are the 10s and the other areas will be 9. But people are used to 9 by 18s. Used to get door dings 20 years ago, now we don't get them.
I gotta show you my car.
Just for the board's edification on the, that bank parking, the ordinance purposefully requires a buffer from the residential building where it faces basically the backside of the commercial building. So the residential building is facing the loading, the trash, et cetera. The initial version of this plan really had no buffer quite at all, but because of the way they reangled the building, and now they have an opportunity in that triangular piece to put a pretty nice buffer in so that those people aren't looking at it, the loading and the workaday part of the commercial buildings. But it's up to the board if you want them to put the parking in or keep it as a buffer.
Yeah, I just wanted to summarize because I know who we're talking about.
Any benefit, the ones we talked about, the employee parking, of splitting them? What was there, 16 spots? Is there any benefit to give eight residential, eight tenant, or you know, the business parking, rather than making them all for the business? I'm going to give you a little bit more for the business and a few more for the residential? Or is it all or nothing?
Well, any number of those the board chose could be selected for employee parking. Like I said, we're overparked on residential. So we have 20, 20 extra. You could lose 20 and still be compliant with RSIS. You know, you asked us to sharpen our pencils and go back and see what we could do on the parking, understanding that we're dealing with an existing center, which has been there a long time. So frankly, I think that the design people did a pretty remarkable job in doing what they did. Frankly, because you made us do it, which was good, but we went back and sharpened our pencils. And I think, as I said earlier to the board, this plan is infinitely better, but it's really a lot nicer and a lot better. The architecture is a lot nicer and a lot better. The number of variances and waivers are much fewer. And I think as a gateway issue, it's going to be a beautiful addition, my opinion, of course, to the town. It really is a question of whether you think the 166 really works for the retail. We think it works. This is our business, but this is your town. So if you think, you know, you're a little concerned about that 166, you know, it really could be helped if you made those spaces or some of them employee only. And we do have control through our leases and through our enforcement with our tenants to designate those as employee spaces. And it would help. But again, you know, we're really comfortable with what we've shown. We're in the business. We know what a tenant's like. And we're not in the business to put tenants in place where they can't park, because we're going to get that phone call right away. I'm losing business, you know, and I'm going to go out of business. You're going to have a vacant store. We don't want that to happen. And we're pretty good, even in a bad time through the pandemic, keeping our tenants. So I'll leave it to the board, but we think what we have is pretty good.
I think we need, yeah, I think we're going to switch seats to.
We need to open to the public from Mr. Cafone's testimony before we even get to those issues. Ready for the board or the public?
Yeah, because I don't think the board members had any questions. So I'm going to, any members from the public that would like to question the witness specifically on her testimony? State your name and address for the record, spelling of your last name.
Susan Golliford Hunt Club Road. For Ms. Mizaro Cafone, on your testimony regarding the lights, I can't remember the testimony on that last time. Was there a discussion about the effect of the lights height on the current residents of Meadowbrook and Andrea?
There was actually, yes. We tested, Mr. Okay, so yes, there was. There was a question about that. We test, Mr. Bowler testified extensively, I think Mr. Pankey did as well, as to the height of the existing lights that are out there, as well as how the heights, the light height that we're proposing is going to provide a more uniform light pattern. So, and that we will not have a negative impact on the adjoining residential neighborhood along Meadowbrook Drive.
Okay, so on the current residents, that fence between you and the Meadowbrook, I know one of the residents was here last time. That's the eight-foot fence, I think, that was allowed and is being allowed to continue?
Well, it's partially a six-foot fence and partially an eight-foot fence. And I know that it's definitely taller than six feet because I stood next to it with heels on and it's taller than me. So the eight-foot part looks to me to start, like right where the building starts, that's about where it gets to eight feet. So before that, there is a fence there and it's stockade and solid, but that one looks about six feet. So it's a combination of six and eight-foot fence there.
Okay, I remember her stating that there were things they didn't want to see over the six-foot fence back there.
She's correct, and the six-foot fence is there. But again, we made a representation that we would repair any parts of it. And it's in pretty good condition. There are a few things that might need to be repaired, but we did agree to repair that fence so that the solid fence would continue.
Okay, and there's still going to be buffers built, grown along the, along where that fence is?
Most definitely. We have submitted a landscaping plan. And again, it's a pretty tired bit of landscaping out there. Mr. Bowler, our engineer, qualified it as being in poor condition. I say that it really just lacks curb appeal. So however you want to say that it doesn't look so nice, you can say it. But I, it needs some supplementing and we are in fact supplementing it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You're requesting a variance for tree mitigation. It's 20% is allowed? 20% of what, the existing trees?
Yes.
Is allowed to be cut down?
Correct.
And you're requesting what?
85%.
That's a huge difference. That's, that's on the property, that's the property where the residential building is going to be constructed?
Correct, because the other portion of the site is already developed.
Okay. And so are you going to be replacing any of those trees?
Yes, some of them we are.
Do you know how many?
I believe we are replacing about 37, but which sounds, we're replacing more trees than that, but you can only get credit based on the ordinance for, I believe it's 37 of them. So we are introducing hundreds of plantings onto the site, but we can really only take credit based on the structure of the ordinance for 37. And we will comply with the terms of the ordinance as far as the non-compliance, as far as the mitigation.
So you're giving a percentage. Do you have an actual number of how many trees will be 80%, 85%? How many actual, the number of trees that will be cut down?
Yes, it's about 1,000. I want to say it's like 1,030 something approximately. It's a little bit over 1,000, just over 1,000.
Wow, and that's supposed to be an improvement for that area? Okay, you're going to have, you're not separating the truck delivery area from customer traffic?
Again, as Mr. Euro indicated in his most, most recent review of this, we've done that to the best of our ability. And again, that's really an existing function of the commercial layout of the site. We're not changing the commercial layout of the site.
Will there be more business there though, now than there was previously?
That's a question we hope is asked, we can't answer that under oath.
Okay, so that's difficult to say how that's, that's going to be safety wise when you have working businesses.
No, it's not. The testimony was that it's safe, and this is not the witness anyway. Testimony from the traffic engineer was that it was safe, and this is not the traffic engineer.
Okay. So you say criteria, criteria A, that it promotes the general welfare. In what way does it promote the general welfare?
It promotes the general welfare, I said, in two ways, in that this is an inclusionary development assisting Hillsboro in meeting your affordable housing obligation. And also it promotes the general welfare. Your master plan specifically calls for the redesign of existing commercial centers. Vacant storefronts don't do anything for Hillsboro, and they certainly don't do anything for the center owner. So it promotes the general welfare to repurpose those commercial centers and redesign them consistent with the vision in the master plan.
Would you say you're upgrading this site?
Substantially.
So the commercial site will be upgraded, which will, which will be a plus, but you're also building residential property. How much, how much affordable housing will be provided by this residential property?
Twenty-nine.
Excuse me?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, and how many are going to be total built?
Twenty-nine of the 118.
Okay, so it's not really the greatest as far as providing affordable housing.
Well, I beg to differ that Mr. Bernstein got us to go to 24% when the standard in the state is 15. So he got you almost doubled, so.
Except that there's, there's a lot of other developments coming up with the affordable housing.
Why don't you donate your property?
Why should I donate it?
Well, you want the housing.
No, I don't. No, I don't.
My mistake.
So why should I donate it?
Next question, please.
Okay. Okay, so criteria A, is it visually appealing? So as far as the commercial property, once that's upgraded and, and, and fixed, that's true. But again, you've got a residential property.
There are no variances for the residential. There are no variances for the residential. The variance testimony that Ms. Cafone gave was based upon the commercial.
Okay, well, but, but one of the things that we mentioned regarding criteria A is that it is.
That's for the variances.
Criteria I, actually, it's just on the record as we are.
I, I, I'm sorry, criteria I. Also, efficient use of the land. The property where the residential building is going to be constructed, does that have wetlands on it?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry.
It has nothing to do with Ms. Cafone's testimony.
If you ask questions that relate to the testimony that this witness gave, she didn't testify about wetlands. The variances relate only to the front portion of the site, which is existing. The residential portion is completely affording.
She mentioned efficient use of the land.
In conjunction with the request for the variances for the front part of the property. You know how that works? You've been here many times.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so when you get a variance, you got to show why. You're entitled, and you got to show that it's not a bad thing. So the why it's entitled are the purposes. That relates to the front, relates to the.
This doesn't relate to the entire project, only to the variances?
Correct.
Okay. All right, in regard to the negative criteria, you stated that it's improving stormwater management. Where, where, how do you, how do you justify that statement?
So we're improving the water quality. We're introducing water quality elements, you know, the technical elements of that should be directed to our site engineer, but we are improving the water quality over what it is today.
Improving the water quality of, as far as what water quality you're talking about? There's contamination of.
The runoff. The runoff.
Improving the runoff off of both properties?
Water quality of the runoff.
From the site in general.
From what it was to what it now will be, if the board can.
And that's based on what? Because it's going to go into a.
No, because the design, pay attention to Mr. Bowler, the design of the groundwater, stormwater system is now subject to high PDP standards, which we now comply with, that the existing property did not.
Treatment, there are things that, there are things that are incorporated into our current stormwater management system that don't exist on the property today. And again, you have to ask Mr. Bowler for the technical specifications, but as I understand it today, it's just a pipe system and we're making substantial improvements to how that water is treated. When I say the water quality, it's how the water is treated and cleaned. is treated. When I say the water quality, it's how the water is treated and cleaned as it comes off of the site and they contain the stormwater.
Okay, and that's in the, would be in the stormwater report?
I would imagine so.
Okay. In regard to the waivers, what is it, the loading area? You need, four are required according to the ordinance?
Correct.
And only one is, is, is being proposed?
One loading area, one formal loading dock is proposed, yes.
Loading dock. So, that's a big difference. I mean, how, how, how are you going to deal with whatever trucks are coming in and stuff, will that cause a backup of trucks or whatever when they come to load and unload?
So, it will not, because Mr. Penkey testified extensively about the loading areas. He testified about the hours of when loading is anticipated, as how it will not be done during peak hours when the site is being utilized. He testified that we have other areas to load, just because they're not formal loading areas. There will be areas for, for the customers or for the commercial facilities to load properly.
It's a huge difference for needing four...
Existing site.
Needing four and providing only one. Regarding the relief on the loading area, is sixty feet are needed and fifty, fifty is being provided?
Yes.
So not only are you minus three, but you're also making the, the proposed loading area smaller?
Well, again, we're not really minus, we're minus three formal loading docks. We have plenty of loading areas on the site, as was testified to Mr. Penkey, that there will be adequate space to load, and based on when the trucks will load here, we have zero concerns that the loading will not be appropriately handled for our tenants on this site.
Okay, but according to the ordinance, four are required?
That's why we're asking for the waiver.
Okay. There's got to be a reason why four are required versus having only one. Now, regarding that parking deficiency, so currently it is two hundred two spaces are needed versus one hundred sixty-six proposed, that's a deficit of thirty-six for the commercial, commercial area.
For the commercial.
How is the determination made as to how many parking spaces are needed, which came up with two hundred two?
I believe we used a one per two hundred space for retail, but I'm, you'd have to add, ask Mr. Penkey how exactly we came up with that. But we applied the ordinance standards. There's a standard in the ordinance for commercial space. We applied it to the square footage that we have, and we came up with a parking requirement. Exactly what those numbers are, I'm not sure, I don't recall them, but that's how it's done, it's very typical. You look at the ordinance, what they require for parking, for commercial uses, you apply it based on your square footage, and you come up with the number of required spaces, and that's exactly what we did here.
Okay. Now, also requesting smaller parking spaces. So not only is there a deficit of thirty-six, but you also have, how many exactly smaller parking spaces?
So, we are, and that's, again, an existing condition on the site today. So if the application were denied, then they would still be existing nonconformities on the site. So I believe we have eighty-one that are nine by eighteen, and seventy-six that are ten by twenty. I believe that's our count that we're proposing. So we don't have all of them that are nonconforming, just some of them.
But most of the parking spaces will be smaller than the required size?
So, about...
That's actually not true. There's seventy-six tens, and there's nine ADA's, so that's eighty-five versus eighty-one.
I'm sorry.
So, so what Mr. Wolfson is saying is that there's seventy-six spots that are ten by twenty. There are eighty-one spots that are nine by eighteen. There are nine spots that are ADA compliant. So, there are actually more spots that are larger than smaller. So, you had made the statement that there are many more smaller spaces, and that's not true. Based on the ADA spaces, based on the amount of ten by twenties we have, the, that's not, it's just not a true statement that we have more smaller spaces.
Not, not counting the ADA, just the regular parking spaces, you have more smaller ones than the, than the, than the required ones?
By a handful, just by...
Okay, so, yeah, so you're saying that my statement is not correct. I'm not including, and I don't know how you include the ADA.
This is arguing, this is arguing, they're not allowed to argue.
The ADA are not applicable to every, the ADA are not applicable to every, I'm sorry, Judge, this is not a court, okay?
Ms. Janusak, I think the board...
No, no, that's rude, very rude, very rude to specify that I should be speaking like some kind of a witness in a court.
Ms. Janusak.
This is, this is a public hearing. This is a public hearing.
Ms. Janusak.
And I don't appreciate Judge Wolfson telling me, either say it this way or go sit down.
Ms. Janusak.
I am not an expert for a legal profession.
All right, I will tell you right now, question the witness, based on her testimony.
I did.
Don't interject.
I did. I was asking a question, and they're saying that I am, what I'm saying is not true.
Ms. Janusak.
What I'm saying is not correct.
Ms. Janusak.
And I'm told to go sit down.
The board doesn't need, the board does not need your benefit to talk about parking spaces. I think we were all able to figure out the sizes of them.
You have, you have gone over and over and over the parking spaces. Now, when I want to ask questions, I'm told it's been discussed too much.
Please, ask a question.
Very rude. This is a public hearing, not a court.
Last time, last time, ask a question or please sit down.
I was asking questions.
Ask a question.
Relevant to her testimony.
Don't try, please do not speak to me, ask a question. Ask a question or please sit down.
This is not Communist China, for gosh sakes. And I'm not at the great odds that you're going to tell me this is how you're talking. It's a public hearing. If I don't know the exact protocol, then please say it, but don't tell me, go sit down.
I said, ask a question or sit down. Your choice.
In regard to the employee parking, you're saying that, that the employees would have to use parking spaces that are part of the commercial parking?
We're asking the board if they want that to be an option, that we would agree to it. We're not proposing that.
No, no, I, I, I said the employees currently now would be, where would they be parking?
As part of the one sixty-six.
Right. So, so you're, so you're proposing something different?
No, we're proposing the one sixty-six. We've told the board that if they wanted, since we're overparked on the residential, we could designate some of those spaces for employees of the retail. So there'll be one sixty-six plus additional.
Because that's what I was asking, are the employees going to be parking in the spaces on the commercial parking lot? For the, the parking spaces?
The answer, the answer, Ms. Janusak, is yes.
Okay. So, the other option you're saying would be to park in the residential parking lot? It's hard to tell.
No, what we said was, if I could just try to answer and clarify this for you, so...
Ms. Kafon, close your table.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the residential portion of our site is overparked by twenty spaces per the RSIS. So what we suggested is if the board weren't comfortable with our one sixty-six, which we testified at length, we are comfortable with. If the board wanted us to take a few of those spaces that are in access for the residential and use them for employee parking, because they're probably not the most convenient for the public to use, then we could have, in our leases, we could designate some of those. So, as Mr. Wagner made a suggestion, maybe half of them. So maybe then that would take our parking deficiency to one seventy-six, where two oh two is required. So, and again, as Mr. Wolfson said, we're not proposing that. It's just something that we put out there, that we have the luxury of offering, given the fact that based on RSIS, we have twenty more residential spots than we need. So that sort of helps us to offset, if the board felt that we needed it, the parking deficiency on the commercial side. Now, again, we don't feel that that's necessary. We believe that one sixty-six is an appropriate number of spaces for our commercial tenants, but we just put it out there for the board to consider.
Okay. You, you just mentioned parking, one hundred seventy-six parking spaces. So are you saying that there's one hundred seventy-six, but you're designating ten for employee parking?
That's not what I said. What I said was...
Because I heard you mention one seventy-six, I don't know what you were referring to.
What I said was we're twenty spaces overparked for the residential.
Right.
If, as Mr. Wagner said, you took half, half of twenty is ten. If you took those half of twenty that were overparked for the residential, and you added it to the commercial of one sixty-six, if you add one sixty-six plus those ten, you would get one seventy-six. So now, the residential would be overparked by ten, and we would have one hundred and seventy-six, not one sixty-six, for the commercial portion of the site, which would bring us closer to conforming per the letter of the ordinance at two oh two, which is required. Now, again, we don't think we need that. We're comfortable with our parking at one sixty-six, and having those extra twenty stay with the residential. If the board wanted to, though, if they felt that we would have to have a little bit more, then we would do that, and we could restrict them to employee parking, we said, because they're probably not where the customers would use, they're not in the location that the customers would likely use them. So I hope that that explains it for you.
Okay, so, I understand what you're saying, that there are twenty more parking spaces than are needed for the residential. So you would use ten of those, you could use ten of those, which would increase the commercial, but those ten parking spaces are in a different area than, than the, than the commercial parking lot, right?
Well, they're not in a different area, which is why we said they would be used for, they're still on the, on the commercial site, and they could use, or they're still on the site, and they could be used for employee parking. So it would be perfectly appropriate to do that.
But they're not on the commercial site, they're on the residential site. Yes?
They're, well, they're...
They're right behind the building.
Exactly, they're behind the building.
Okay, but not on the, on the commercial parking lot. Or, or another option was banked parking, where you could use a buffer for parking?
So, that area is in between, if you look at the screen that's on the building, and I'll try to take Mr. Allmack's cursor, we, here, I add the cursor on it, right, so, there you go. So that parking field that has eighteen spaces in it, yes, eighteen spaces, so, there you go. See that we're moving the cursor around? Now, what we could do is, we could take that area and we could put banked parking there, but what that would require the board to do is the board would then need to grant us an impervious coverage variance for that, and we would also need to have a buffer variance, because if that were paved, then it would be a parking, and it wouldn't be green space, I'm sorry, are you not picking me up? It wouldn't be green space between the commercial and the back portion of the, the side of the residential and the back of the commercial. So, again, that's something that we don't feel that we need. We don't think we need those eighteen spaces, but we put it out there as a proper to the board, that if they were not comfortable with the parking, that there are options that we can do on this site to meet the parking demand.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions from the public, from the board, professionals? Okay. You have any more...
Chairman, that concludes our case. I know that you would have to open this up now to the public for comment. I know you're breathlessly waiting my summation, which I'll make sure I don't do. So as soon as you close, we'll close.
Okay. So, Eric, now it's, do we have to do another motion just for public comment?
Public comment is open. The issue is public comment related to the application as a whole. I will point out, the board has a number of issues that it will have to address once the public comment is over.
Okay. Okay, so, it's open to the public for just general comments on the overall application at this time?
I would ask, Chairman, also, we can keep it to five minutes. Man, we've pretty much been through most everything, so.
Okay, so, is anyone from the public, if you'd like to come forward, state your name again, and address for the record. And again, this is comments, or is no longer Q and A?
Oh, so there's no questions, again?
This, this is just general comment on the application. Anything that's on your thoughts about, your feelings about this application?
Maria Janusak. So, I have a copy of the Housing Plan Element and Fair Share Plan, and this proper, this, this application is under Edgewood Properties Cost Cutters, and in parentheses, now known as JSM and Hillsborough. And it's going to consist of one hundred eighteen total dwelling units, including twenty-nine affordable units, and fifty thousand square feet of commercial space located on Route two oh six, southbound at Andrea Avenue. The zoning ordinance for this project has been adopted, and the project is currently before the Hillsborough Township Planning Board. So, I don't understand why a zoning ordinance was adopted specifically for this property. There are two separate parcels of land, which are being combined without having been merged. This, this commercial and residential is combined, and I guess, I guess it's being, this, this, this application is being done in accordance with the new zoning ordinance. I'm questioning whether that zoning ordinance was filed with the Somerset County Planning Board, because that is, that is a requirement of the municipal land use law. And also, is this an existing zone, or is this an additional zone? Because I think it amends the Hillsborough Township zoning ordinance as an additional zone. Is this part of the, has this been recorded, or rather, has, has the Hillsborough Township zoning map been amended to reflect this, this ordinance? And I think that these are important issues before you start going into any other details of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan, any final thoughts before we close? Okay, so at this point, is there a motion to close the public?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, as promised...
Can I have just one other comment before you get into your summation?
I, I was going to waive my right to make a summation, because I think the board's been through this so many times now.
Obviously, I'm sorry. So obviously, we don't know what tenants are moving into this complex. It's essentially empty, correct? So, the, and we really haven't, since we don't know what the tenants, we don't necessarily know what the hours of operations are going to be, based on what tenants are moving in. So, I guess as a condition of approval, if, if some commercial tenants were to move into these buildings, and they wanted to be outside any normal operating hours, we would ask them to come back to the board to get the approval.
I, I don't know that I have an issue with that, but is there an ordinance that says what those are?
Well, we could set the hours of operation now, based on what we think they should be, and then, but if somebody should require any additional hours outside that. Because right now, we have nobody, no idea what stories you're, what you're going to be putting into these, correct?
I think that's right, but typically, and that's why I asked a question about Hillsborough, there are some towns that have ordinances that talk about hours of operation and things like that. Typically, when there's no, when there's no limit, I, I'm not arguing, I don't want to be combative with the board, but typically, that would, in my view, be beyond the planning board's power, because then they would be enacting essentially an ordinance that the mayor and council should be doing. And there's, and I don't know that we'd have to keep coming back every time a tenant changes. You know, Dunkin' Donuts wants to stay open until twelve, but, you know, McDonald's closes at ten. It makes for really unworkable. And again, I'm not likely to be typical, but, like I said...
We're just here, so that's why I don't know what's going to take.
But, you know, that's really typical of any, even if it was a brand-new center, you know. Look, the time, the kind of people that would be in there, you know, because it's basically the size and shape of that location. It can typically be little small-service things or things like that. You know, you're going to have a, a drive-through on one side. They differ, you know, some of those close at ten, some stay open at twelve. The Dunkin' Donuts, I think, in Highland Park is twenty-four hours. I just don't know what, you know, the tenants will want. I don't know what your town will want. I mean, a lot of top places, people want places to be able to go to after ten, eleven at night. So I would really urge you not to do that. Obviously, you'll do what you think is best for the town, and, you know, we'll, we'll deal with it, but I think it's really a slippery slope, and it just creates additional work for everybody, because every time a tenant changes, you know, well, three hours are nine to, you know, ten. Now, we got to go back to the board and get permission, and then what are the standards? You know, how do we decide whether this is a good place that you want to let be open versus a place that you just soon keep closed? And then, and then it, you know, could be accused of being arbitrary, and I just think it's a mess, Mr. Mayor, but, you know, again, I don't want to step on anybody's toes. I just think it's something that I would ask you, please, don't do.
Mr. Chairman, I think the reason it's coming up is the uncertainty of the situation at hand. Generally, when an applicant with a commercial property comes before this board, they usually have some idea who the tenants are. have some idea who the tenants are, or some idea of the kind of tenants they're looking for. And what I think is adding to the excitement here, Mr. Wolfson, is your client's proposal for a pad site with a drive-through, which does not exist on the existing commercial site. I don't think the board is necessarily looking to change the hours of operation from what has been the existing commercial site. You've got a restaurant there for time immemorial, that I can remember in my being here. I think the issue is predominantly the, the lack of knowledge relative to the pad site, and possibly whether or not your clients have any interest in, I'm assuming, these are my assumptions, that the current restaurant will stay, maybe they won't, is what your clients plan on are for the existing commercial development that is currently empty. I think that's the uncertainty the board's feeling at the moment on these issues. They don't necessarily want to regulate these things, but in the absence of not knowing, the not knowing becomes a bigger problem, when a group of people come in and say, "Oh my God, how did you allow a bunch of commercial operations to be open 24/7?"
I think that, I don't know.
It's not unusual for this board to impose hours of operation. You, you've seen many applications, and the board has done that in the past. We've even gone so far as to require that lights be dimmed after a certain time. So it's not, certainly not out of the realm of possibility, and this board has done it many times in the past.
All right. Yeah, no, I mean, I agree. I mean, I think that the only thing I'm thinking of in recent memory, and now it's a little more distant, was the infamous Sonic application that brought a neighborhood with their own counselor and professionals in concern of a 24-hour operation. So I think that's where the mayor is going down, too, is, you know, any type of an overnight operation, I don't know. Mr. Mayor, what kind of, what are you thinking?
I always think you'll buy, you know, 11 o'clock, I think that, that gives plenty wiggle room for most any operation to be open to, whether it be a drive-through restaurant like Wendy's, or Panera, whoever.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I think anybody that would want to go past that, we, we should have the ability to.
And how early it opens? Six or five?
Why?
Because we know how the garbage trucks have wakened people up, too, so, and that became an issue.
Well, I'll, I'll leave it up to discussion, where about, I think six is plenty early enough, I mean, it's-
That's reasonable.
So, six to 11, propose as a, a buffer and anything outside of that.
Right.
So, that's just my own thoughts, that we haven't fully discussed in the, in the testimony. So.
Yeah, one other item we haven't discussed is, is what, what is the planned order of, or priority for completing the work? Because we have a commercial construction project, and then you have residential behind it. So is there, and, and then brand-new restaurant going in. So what, what's the idea for completing this project?
And again, it depends on the board's discretion. Obviously, this, this one's a little different than most, because you have two large existing buildings that just need to be, for lack of better words, reskinned or, or redone. My gut would say that the proposed restaurant pad would not be built until we secure a tenant. We wouldn't build a building like that, typically on spec, if you will. We would wait, wait for a tenant. And to be honest with the, and to the mayor's point, um, the chances of securing a tenant who's going to take exactly 2,500 square feet, exactly that shape, most likely will be back here for some tenant, whether it be for hours or for uses or the building itself. So I would say the pad is probably something that would be done at a much later date, once we secure a tenant. As far as the commercial portion of it, we would start, uh, doing the resurfacing, reskining immediately. You know, we've been trying to lease the center for a number of years, and have been unsuccessful. So obviously, you know, redoing the commercial portion's important to us, because it's an existing site. Uh, it's not, well, it's easy for me to say it's not my money, but it's not a whole lot of money being put into it, because you're just reskinning it. The base is already there, the bones are, the bones are good. Uh, and then we would start the residential. Obviously, the town has the, you know, the affordable housing obligation that we would, we would be constructing there, so the residential would come either at the same time as the, the refacing, or shortly thereafter.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess, you know, with the, is there like a planned maybe build-out period? Are we looking at five-year build-out?
Typically, our, our normal is 100 units a year is usually the number we use. This is 118 units, so probably a one-year build-out. Um, may, maybe 18, well, let me rephrase that, because of the current situation of the world with materials and everything, we're, we're struggling with getting materials.
A lot of back orders.
So, uh, under normal conditions, it's probably be a 12- or 18-month project.
Okay, and that would be inclusive of the clubhouse?
Yes.
Only because my distant memory, I got tired of feeling phone calls over a clubhouse that was well behind schedule, but residents were there a few years, and I'm not going to name that development.
Yeah, the difference here is it's, it's within the building. It's not a typical, where you have a standalone, uh, and they don't build it until the end. This is part of, part of the structure.
Or even outdoor control and all that stuff.
Yeah, this is part of the structure. And again, with the, the amenity packages, it's much easier for us to construct that while we're doing the building, rather than trying to go in there and dig a, dig a pool or put in the patio and all amenities, when you have a finished building around you. Uh, so we would do that upfront as well.
Yeah, as I said, one development in particular did not surprise me, and it was a, it, it was involving affordable housing.
Understood.
Just wanted to make sure that they don't wait two or three years, so, for the first time, so. Okay. Any additional comments? One last by the apple, Dave, Bob?
No.
Okay.
So am I hearing correctly, Mr. Auerbach, that the, that your client might be interested in a condition that before you build the pad site, that you would come back to the board relative to who it would be, hours of operation, and possible other conditions that might be necessary for the building, if such?
Uh, only if it's different than what's on the approved plan. If I had a tenant that was going to take 2,500 square feet, and was going to occupy within the hours that I'm hearing the board, the 6:00 AM to 11:00, I, I would not want to come back, uh, but if it's something different, then obviously, I would come back.
Interested in that condition, Mr. Wolfson?
Are you asking if I consent to the condition?
Yes. Exactly as Mr. Auerbach indicated.
I mean, I'm, I'm concerned about the condition interfering with our ability to get it in the first place. And then what do I do? Come back and say, "I can't find a tenant that'll agree to those hours? Please give me more." I, I just think it's, it's difficult, and it's, and it's cumbersome, and I think it's going to be, um, just a problem. But if the board wants to impose a condition, and Mr. Maskey's saying that you do that in the past, it's not my, within my power to stop you, obviously, and you can just do it. I would prefer not to have to consent to that, because I, I can just see nightmares on that. You're going to get a tenant-
Well, yeah, no, I mean, I understand you don't want, you know, restrictions, but also the nightmares we face, too. You know, I mean, I think it's just a happy, you know, medium, because we're, but, you know, we, I think because we're adjacent to a residential neighborhood.
No, I, I understand, and I'm not suggesting that Mr. Mayor's comment is ill-placed or unreasonable. You're asking if I consent to it. I prefer not to consent.
Right.
And if you impose it, I'll go back to like, you know, the client, say, "Hey, I thought, I didn't want it, but they did it." I, I would, uh, obviously, the square footage of the pad is one thing, which I think would make sense if it became, you requested larger, you would have to come back. Oh, yes, correct.
Or smaller.
Or smaller, right? Because it's, it could change the footprint and the parking, so.
Get more parking.
Right. So, uh, I would, I would say to make it better for everybody, to make it less cumbersome, I would say to, to midnight max, 6:00 AM to midnight, I would say. That gives plenty of room there. I see someone yelling "5" in the back, but-
Clearly, you're not swiftness. If you get to 6:00, I mean-
I'm at work at 7:00 in the morning, so I don't want to hear that.
I, I make my own coffee, sorry.
Hey, the bagel place by where I live is open at 5:00. I'll, I'll consent to the board's, uh, you know, if they feel 5:00 is more reasonable. But most, most elements-
Is this limited to the pad? Because what if, what if the tenant is going to be a 24-hour shopping center food store?
Well, that's-
I mean, is it the pad, or is it the site?
The whole site.
The whole site.
So if they want to be a 24-hour food store, they're going to have to come back here, regardless, because-
And what that gives, opportunity to the neighborhood to weigh into, so. You'll, you'll get to know what the residents feel.
It's not just that building, it's the, it's the entire commercial site, correct?
It sounds like limiting the 24-hour operation, and, you know, making that, that segment of, of time, so it's not 24 or 24/7. I think that's what we're, I guess, mulling.
I'm good from, from, from 5:00 to midnight. I think that breaks it up.
I'm good with that, too.
All right, well, then I will, I will agree to withhold the board's. So 5:00 to midnight.
Okay.
And, uh, the other thing, obviously, discussion is-
The parking.
We're, we're just moving numbers around. The spots are the spots, right? I mean, they're all there. So I guess, if possibly the, deep term, without a designating the parking in the back to be for employees only, that if the board professionals or the townships said, "Listen, we need to do something," that you would then address that issue and possibly re-sign those sites?
Yes, absolutely.
Instead of doing it ahead of time, let's see what, what's built, again, because we're, we're in the dark.
Right. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I-
You only have to ask once.
I, I think the parking, uh, situation, problems that may arise are going to be more internal to the property than external, and I think the operator of the property is, seems to be very well-versed in what the needs are of their tenants. Uh, I, I was happy with the changes and the thoughtfulness of, you know, having those parking spots banked, um, taking some of the overpark from the residential, and keeping them adjacent to the commercial, so I appreciate the redesign and the reconfiguration of that. Uh, I don't think that's going to be really a problem for, for us, it's a problem for their customers, more than our purview. That's my comments.
Hey, and I, I mean, I tend to agree. I mean, I, I'd like to see the banked area stay as a buffer, green space. I like bigger spaces, because my car doesn't like the smaller spaces. But also, to have that extra parking for the residents, because I think that's one thing, any of us, you know, whoever over the years have visited, you know, friends that may live in, you know, high-density, you know, uh, you know, residents like that, there never seems to be parking for visitors, barely enough for residents, so, you know. But I think, I, I think the-
Or is the feeling of the board to leave the parking as is?
And I think it's, I, 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 I think so, because I think it'll, again, it, I think what Bob just said, uh, you know, or Robbie's group was just saying, it'll be up to the, um, to the ownership to figure out what's best, you know, for their customers, or for their tenants, but.
Spots are the spots.
Right, and if they feel the need, that they need to designate them later, at a later time, as employees only, they can deal with that accordingly.
And I don't think there's anything else, other than just proving the variances that were requested.
So.
Right. As, and waivers.
All right, so I guess, Mayor, can you?
It's a motion to approve the application of JSM at Hillsborough LLC, PV, 20 PB09MSPV. Final major site plan approval, see both variances and waivers to merge lots 66 and 67 to construct a mixed-use development consisting of three-story, 118-unit, multi-family buildings, rear the site local, the lot 66 portion, and renovate two existing commercial buildings and construct a drive-through restaurant on the front portion of the property, lot 67 portion, with associated parking, lighting, landscaping, utility, stormwater improvements, on property in the mixed-use inclusionary overlay district within the GA zone. Along with the waivers and variances sought by the applicant, meeting all of the conditions set forth in the various letters by Mr. Maskey, Mr. Euro, and the fire marshal, to keep the parking in its current configuration. The hours of operation for the commercial establishment, no earlier than 5:00 AM, no later than 12:00 midnight. Applicant reserves the right to come back under certain conditions to seek an extension of same, um, and all other provisions and conditions as set forth in the transcripts.
So with just what Eric just summarized for us, entertaining the, uh, motion?
I'll move that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, any additional comments from the deists? Okay, and roll call, yes?
I'm sorry.
Almost there.
That's why we keep the building cold.
Don't forget, don't forget we have another one out here in the home stretch.
Okay, Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Peace?
Yes.
Mr. Sander Amida?
Yes.
Mr. Chigarelli?
Yes.
Mr. Lepani?
Uh, yes, that's okay.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Lepani, when I'm at work, and Mayor Lepani, I'm here. Uh, thank you to, uh, the applicant for addressing our concerns and, and making, which I feel is a much better project for Hillsborough, and- And the board and your professional group. And I- God, either way. I will say yes. Sorry, Tina.
Chairman Sarachi?
Yes, and I'm not-
Chairman, come back again?
I'm not having any-
Welcome back to you guys.
Thank you, Chairman, Mayor. Remember, we really appreciate the hard work you also did, I think I was getting the plan and the sheet for you.
And it was good to see you in person, finally.
Yes.
Masking off.
Happy holidays, and, uh, happy New Year.
Director Stan?
Well, with Purdue. Does that have that flight team now? All right, do you have, uh, listening?
No, so-
Next meeting is January 13th, 2022. Uh, the REO meeting starts at 7:00. Okay, so, yeah, January 13th. Attention, please. Uh, January 13th, REO meeting starts at 7:00, 7:30, we continue Harvard Way. Uh, I would ask that anybody who did not attend the November 18th Harvard Way, um, hearings, review the tape or the transcript, and, uh, so you're eligible to vote on January 13th.
Okay, so with that, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we adjourned. Everyone have a great holiday, Christmas, New Years, and we'll see you next year. Goodnight.
Hillsborough, New Jersey, celebrating 250 years of a rich history. Hi, I'm Mayor Sean Lepani, and I'm proud to showcase Hillsborough, one of the best places to live in America. From the preserved farms that helped feed the world, to the Van De Veer House, to the John R. Stott's House, restored and currently utilized for business, to the magnificent and world-famous Duke Farms-
Where you can walk or ride a bike through their historic grounds. To the iconic Nechannick Reformed Church, and just down the road is our fabulous Nechannick Mill, located right on the picturesque Rowerton River.
You're invited to visit Hillsborough, a great place to live, work, play, and do business anytime, and experience over 250 years of proud history in Hillsborough, New Jersey.